That they are present. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Corto? Absent. Jerome?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
Vogel?
Present.
We have four.
Great. Next is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Trustee? Vogel?
Vogel, as it turns out.
Yes, I was going to say Jane.
So fun. Hey, on new business, and just in general, I'd like to suggest that J seven and J eight, which are the Z Road pathway items, and they'll be that we move those to agenda items because they include outside people to the top of new business. So we're not keeping, in this case, Matt and his team until late in the meeting. So basically, my request is to move
J seven and J eight to the top of
And I would request that we do that in general. When we bring folks in from outside, let's just have the, make it easy and put them at the top of the addenda.
Well, there are no objections. We can do that.
And Will, I just wanted to pull payment of the bills from the consent agenda because we have two to add up.
Okay, so that would make that, is that unfinished business or is that?
That's new business.
New business, too. All right, well, let's put that, so H one will move to the end of new business and J seven and J eight will move to the top of new business. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Someone ready to move approval or adoption of the agenda? Move by Vogel? Support by Noel? Please call a roll.
It also just
Oh, can we do it by voice vote?
If you wish, you could just say all in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next is approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes. These are the minutes of the regular meeting of January 11th, 2022. Are there any corrections to these minutes?
We have one.
All right.
Page two, under Vogel reflected, I misspelled, I put them instead of Dean.
Are there any other corrections to the minutes? Trustee Jerome?
Yes, so I had a couple of clarifications on the comments that I made. I guess somehow they were not captured accordingly, even though I read them. So on page two, rather than, Jerome had no specific corrections, but said he was disappointed. I actually said, I am disappointed to see how the minutes were captured. They have not changed at all to address the comments and concerns expressed by members of the BOT. I am not in support of the minutes as presented. And that's, I'd like to have a change to read that. Additionally then, on page ten, page seven, Jerome said the Budget Finance Committee should meet every single month. Actually, what I said was, the Budget Finance Committee meeting should be about policy and procedures. This has not been the case. This committee should be, meet regularly like our other committees, and that budget and finance has a cadence. It doesn't turn on and off. The constant review of financial records ensures a minimum of miscues. I would support the administrator had this effort, as he has been tasked with these responsibilities per his job description. Discussion of staffing should be led by the administrator of the township in a completely separate meeting, as the lead of township staff and hiring in is not germane to the Budget Finance Committee. Additionally, on page seven, I would like it noted that during public comment by Alice Owens, there was an rude interruption, and I want it noted in the minutes by the public that essentially
Was a rude interruption by another member of the public?
By another member of the public, imitating a bodily function, which disrupted and was unfair to the individual speaking.
By another member of the public? You want that detail in there? About the bodily function, or do you just want rude?
I think it's important, a rude offensive act.
A rude offensive interruption.
I think it's important that we name what's happening with regards to some of the issues that people have done. Additionally then, page 12, this is, I'd like to strike Jerome suggested Flintoff's duties may have been reduced, because I think I read this twice, actually, to clarify exactly what I had stated. On the subject of compensation, I do feel that the duties and responsibilities of both the clerk and supervisor have changed. The hiring of a township administrator has altered the landscape of job duties and reporting for many positions. Utilities, fire, budget, human resources, et cetera, all fall under the administrator, which has greatly reduced the work of individuals for the better, so they can concentrate on core functions for other statutory responsibilities. That was not specifying anyone individual with regards to that.
Which page was that on?
It was on page nine.
Oh, page nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, page nine.
On the K two.
It's confusing, because there's two page numbers.
Yeah, that's what's getting me mixed up. Additionally then, page 11, and here I do think it's important to have the exact statement. At 3:30 in the meeting, the Ms. Stein noted, don't be a miserable expletive.
I just want to make sure we're clear. So K five, Pat Stein?
Correct.
You would like it to say?
Would like to say what was, seems to be sanitized from the meeting minutes, and the individual noted, don't be a miserable B-I-T-C-H.
Please expletive, please.
Don't be a miserable bitch. And we will use expletive to, for that. And I would like to note that, the reason I'm stating these is that these are not appropriate for these meetings. Public comment should be a place for safe and civil discussion by the public with regards to anything they want to speak about. But we need to be able to conduct ourselves in a way that people feel comfortable, whether or not they are for or against a particular position, and these are not appropriate comments to make in any meeting, quite honestly, and far less in this township meeting.
Do you have to get at, don't, that she said?
You could do, don't be, don't be a miserable, and you can just use the expletive. You don't need to actually use the language.
Okay, thank you. So I could just Just use
Use the language so people know
I'm sorry, it's not time for a public comment. Thank you. I just, Alex, I'm just really trying to get what you wanted to say.
I, you could do, don't be a miserable, and you could have blank, and then have expletive following that, so it's very clear.
Okay.
Additionally then, on page 13, there is no capture of any of the comments that I made with regards to the Kubota tractor purchase. And I did talk about the need for a program and a plan for paths and parksway clearing, and it needed to be township-wide, and we needed to develop an approach that was built in to how we are going to incorporate not only what we have currently, but how we're going to incorporate future needs, and none of those comments were captured in the minutes. Those are my only changes.
Great, thank you. And for those that you had written, do you mind if I get a copy of those after the
I'd be happy to, they're on other notes, but I'd be happy to send them to you first tomorrow morning, that's fine.
Thank you.
Trustee Vogel?
I want to recognize in K seven, I also made a comment emphasizing the need for a policy on park and pathway maintenance. That while there's broad support for the tractor purchase, and mutual support for the clearing of Parkland Plaza, we need a policy.
Of parks and pathways maintenance policy.
A policy to guide the maintenance plan.
Great. Thank you.
This isn't a correction to the minutes. It's regarding public comment. Supervisor Hathaway, shall I say that now, in the context of the minutes? Or shall I, I'm asking the supervisor. Or shall I offer a perspective in the beginning of public comment?
Trying to think when the best time is to have that conversation.
I would suggest just before public comment, Jerome.
Sure, why don't we do that? If there's time for, it will allow some time for discussion prior to the commencing public comment, please. Okay, I'm sorry, lost my place in the minutes. Are there any other comments, corrections to the minutes of the January 11th meeting? I have a couple minor changes, and I confess, I did not go and listen to the video, but in my statement under K one, which is the determination of the salary for the township supervisor, I am pretty sure I didn't say that I would like to voluntarily reduce my salary, but I did say that I will voluntarily reduce my salary.
Oh, so, yeah, where are you at?
It's on page eight of the minutes.
Great, thank you.
And it's
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Okay, that he would voluntarily?
That I will voluntarily reduce my salary.
Will, okay.
And then I think I added something to the effect of, to honor the commission's determination.
Okay. It's okay, if anybody has, just as a quick reminder, you got to turn your speaker and your mic off if you use Zoom in this room.
I can't get it on right now.
I just shared that because it's your first time here in this room.
My first time doing this. Sorry, everyone.
Good reminder. All right. Are there any other corrections, modifications to the minutes? Seeing none, is someone ready to move the approval of the minutes as corrected? Move by Jerome?
Support?
Support by Flintoff? And can we do this on a voice vote?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we've adopted the minutes. Moving on, next is communications to the Board of Trustees. Clerk Flintoff?
They're all here, no comments.
Okay. Thank you, everyone who took time to write to the Board of Trustees. That brings us to public comment, and before we commence with public comment, let's have an opportunity for members of the Board to comment on public comment.
I'd like to just read a short statement. The tenure of public comment is shifting from Yeah, this is hard. I'll try. The tenure of public comment is shifting from perspectives on issues to personal attacks on individuals. There is a culture of fear and intimidation that is emerging. It is hard to be on the receiving end of a personal attack. More importantly, it does not serve our community well. I hope SIO never has to take the clerk off on her reference to a class on how to be insulted by the public. It is not the SIO Township I know or aspire to. A journalist who wrote one of the many recent articles in local media on the recalls, lawsuits, letters to the Attorney General from a small group of SIO residents, had a wonderful observation about his conversations with SIO residents. When I wished him a Merry Christmas at the end of our conversation, he said, the people in SIO are so nice. Everyone wished me well. That's not how it is, and he named another community. We need to protect that character in SIO as much as we need to protect the open space and rural character that our residents value so much. This board has a responsibility to represent all of our residents and a fiduciary responsibility regarding township funds. We are elected, we take votes. Not everyone would like the outcome. That is part of the democratic process. There is a mutual willingness on this board to hear all public comment. The request is that those comments stay focused on the issues. Thank you.
Are there any other comments about public comments before we commence with public comments?
Will?
Oh, Treasurer Palmer?
I wasn't in attendance due to COVID. However, I was shocked and appalled when I heard that a member of the public had made the comment that was made in reference to Jane that night. In all my years being on this board, no one ever, ever called any of us anything. Didn't agree. Many times, they didn't like the issue, and I remember one time, a gentleman of the public, I thought he was going to have a heart attack, because he was so passionate about his viewpoint. And yet, that was okay. Not that he would have a heart attack, but it was okay, he was passionate. But there was no one ever has called anyone anything. And I'm pleased, I'm asking all of you who have the opportunity to participate, to be polite and respectful of your township board. Thank you.
Are there any other comments before we proceed?
Just introduce something, Terry, so people know who they're talking to.
Thank you, that's a good point. So this evening, Terry Suave?
Suave.
Suave is making her debut as our remote participation administrator. Terry works at the fire department as our fire administrative assistant, and she's helping us this evening for the first time. Well, you were here sort of in a apprentice capacity at the latest meeting, but this is Terry's first solo opportunity in this role, so I hope everyone will
I told, I told her she wasn't solo.
Oh, she was not, she was not solo? All right. Well, in any case, I hope people will, you know, be respectful of Terry's efforts in this, her first effort in this particular role. We're looking forward to having Terry help us in our meetings going forward. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
All right, this is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matters under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Later during the meeting, there will be an opportunity for public comment on action items. Members of the public may choose to speak on an agenda item now or later, when it comes up for possible action, but not both. If you are participating remotely, I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. If you are participating in person, you may approach the table when it is your turn. Please remain muted until you have been called upon. Trustee Jerome has agreed to serve as timekeeper and will announce when there is 30 seconds remaining, and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are finished, and when your turn is up, please check to make sure that you are re-muted. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers, and please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. And to the trustees, I would add a reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying, and neither should we make sounds or speak to show support or opposition to others' comments. Now, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? And we'll start with people who are here in person first. Please come to the table.
Good evening. My name is Abby, A-B-B-Y. My wife Amanda and I have made SIO our home since 2016. I loved SIO, but the day after Christmas, I was faced with a situation that I felt very unwelcome in SIO. I'm here to talk to my board, to my local government, to let them know, and it's going to be beyond the three minutes, so I'm going to talk the other three minutes and possibly during one other point to continue, because it's beyond the scope. As you can tell from my appearance, I'm an immigrant to this country. I came here when I was 16 years old, during the last year of President Carter. I always felt welcome until the last four years of Donald Trump, during which time I was called more racial names over different issues, and because they can't tell my ethnicity, forgive me for the language, I'm going to use the word, sandmigger, dago, speck, raghead, you name it. But of course, I'm not going to correct them, so they can call me by racial name. I took a breeder. When the new administration came in, I said, we are back to our local SIO. I had the unfortunate, same as everybody in the SIO, I want to talk about the elephant in the room, this recall. I was introduced to the recall by a doorknob on my unit at SIO Village Condominium Association. All 88 of us got it. I read it, didn't know anything about anybody involved, but the day after Christmas, I had the unfortunate and the displeasure of being introduced to the two architects of the recall. Pat Stein and Kenneth Reed, who were in our neighborhood, they approached me and they asked me if I would sign their petition. I said, what is your petition about? Could you please tell me? So we are trying to recall our township supervisor and two of our board members. I said, well, tell me about it, why? Kind of like peeling the layers of onion, we got engaged in a discussion, on and on and on. So it's important for you to know, when they approached me at the beginning, they didn't ask me, are you a US citizen? Because we want to make sure you can sign the petition. They handed me the petition and said, sign it. At the conclusion of when I realized I did not like their motives, and I handed the petition back, then they tried to identify me at that time. What's your name? What is your address? I said, are you law enforcement? Why are you asking these questions? Then they went on, we started talking at the last meeting. Where are you from? Where are you from? They all threw and tried, to which I responded, that's called ethnic intimidation. It's illegal under the law. You did not vet me when you came to me first. You didn't ask me if I was a voter at the beginning. When you thought I was a yes vote, you handed me the petition. When I became a no vote, now you want to know my full name, my address, and my ethnicity. To what end? I said, that's illegal, it has criminal statutes attached to it. So if my time is up, I'm going to continue, because I'm very unhappy, and my wife and I feel very unwelcome with these people who are using their personal motives. They keep saying, let's save SIO, you know, we need to save SIO from them. That's who we need to save SIO, because they are selling a bill of goods to people, they have ulterior motives behind the scene. I get into it, because it was a 25-minute conversation between the two of us, between the three of us, rather I should say, because Ms. Stein was there too, to which I went step by step to find out. I said, well, your biggest issue was that you wanted the township supervisor to give
I think if you want to continue at another point, when you
Thank you. Have another I'll continue at the next
public comment, maybe then you
Sure, I'll continue at the next section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others present who would like to speak during public comment? No? Okay. In that case, we have remote participants who would like to speak.
We do. We have Rob Pattinson, followed by Paula G.
So is Rob unmuted?
Rob?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Rob Pattinson, SIO Township. Last night, the Planning Commission had a several hours-long meeting, and one of the primary topics of discussion was the party barns issues that we have in SIO Township. The Herons have put together a plan for an event venue, and unfortunately, they are putting forward this application while SIO Township is under is in the middle of a 13-year-long issue with party barns on SIO Church. And the problem is that the township does not have an ordinance with enough teeth in it to make it enforceable, and it's not coordinated with the Sheriff's Department, so that the sheriff's deputies who respond to calls can help the residents when they have a problem. I believe you now have an opportunity to address this issue, and I hope you treat it as an emergency, the way you did the fire inspection ordinances earlier in the summer, to put together an ordinance that will allow sheriff's deputies to take action and write tickets when they get calls. Of the 14 deputies that are assigned on and off to SIO Township, only one of them is an ordinance officer, and he doesn't work at 9:10, 11:00 o'clock on the weekends. So we need something that can coordinate with the Sheriff's Department, and I believe, like I said, you have an opportunity now to address the issue. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Paula G., followed by Pam Boy. Pam Boy.
Yeah, Rob touched, this is Paula Gloversen, SIO resident. I also watched the Planning Commission last night. There's a couple of reasons why I did, and I didn't really know the Heron Farms was on there, but I knew the Marshall Road situation was on there, and I was curious about that. And, but, yeah, it's great for the poor people that for 13 years who have suffered under the party barn event. I think what the real issue, when I listened to the Heron Farm, is they have no grapevines. They want 150 parking spaces right there at Dexter and Arbor, for those who are watching the board meeting. And it's going, that's zoned agricultural, and I think it should stay agricultural. They don't really have agriculture, a few haystacks. There's different legal issues on what, it was supposed to help farmers and not be for, now, they did say they would make it inauditable, but what happens when, if they can't get their vines to grow? They don't even have vines in the ground. She's done an online course. She had a man from Adrian who has an event winery. She had a man from Adrian who has an event winery and with live music. And Syo isn't good with enforcing. They don't have the manpower to do it and doesn't seem like an interest because a lot of people suffered for quite a long time. And then secondly, having met Pat Stein, I'm kind of shocked with the last speaker to, but I'm not denying his feelings, but I have never witnessed Pat Stein. She's not the type of person to be rude. When you do collect petitions, you do need to ask a person if you're a registered voter and what county or state you are. And then, that's beside the point, but I wanted to make another point because I watched the RAC meeting and that was very interesting about your pet project supervisor Hathaway. Like they're already trying to move your sad forward on Park Road. And I'll be able to make more comments about that on different meetings and in writing. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Pam Boyd followed by Pat Stein.
I'd just like to remind speakers that the comments should be directed to the Board of Trustees and not to other members of the public, please.
Pam Boyd, Syo resident, thank you. I agree with the other residents talking about last night's Planning Commission meeting. I know this board does not like it when residents call these barns party barns. I called it an event barn in my comment last night to the Planning Commission, but they have become party barns. I would love for them not to have that moniker. My main topic is the First Amendment, per the Supreme Court case voted that the First Amendment does not say you have to be nice and polite in your comments. If you're angry because the government isn't doing their job, you will find angry words said. It pains me, but this issue is not all the residents' fault. I would hope that this board will do its best to be open and transparent going forward with residents. Thank you.
Next is Pat Stein followed by Steve King.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, Pat Stein, Syo Township. I've been a resident here for 45 years and I want to tell you, I'm sorry that tonight the chat feature was disabled because I was trying to alert you by being misquoted. And I will tell you what I did say and I will review the video later to make sure that I'm understanding or remembering what I exactly said. But I do believe the last meeting, I was not being negative. I said I was not being negative and I suggested that Jane spend some time, when she had free time, to review all the videos that are available for all the meetings she attended because I thought she should reflect and correct her behavior. Because as I recall, I said, "When you look at the videos, you will see that your behavior resembles that of a miserable bee." I said, "I did say the whole word, but I did not say she was one. I said her behavior resembled that." And unfortunately, listening to approved the minutes, they will be inaccurate. And as far as that fellow, Mr. Abby, I got to tell you, that story is so wrong. David and I were canvassing in the, I can't remember, Syo Village. And in that area, Mr. Abby was actually lying in wait. He was pretending like he was working on a tire or something and he was waiting for David and I to approach. And that, the encounter was brief and his comments...
I don't have a chance to respond.
I'm sorry?
Because she's addressing me, she's lying.
I'm still, I'm still...
So I have a right to respond because she's already addressing me. She's addressing me, so I have a right to respond.
Abby, my suggestion here, my suggestion here to both Abby and Pat, if I may, is that, you know, we, I don't want this space to become a place where conflict between residents becomes inflamed, okay? And this is not appropriate to be kind of debating what happened. I mean, Pat, I believe wholly in the First Amendment, you may say whatever you want. Abby, you may say whatever you want, but this is not going to get resolved here. And certainly, we're not going to decide what happened on a particular day. So I would ask, Pat, if you could please direct your comments toward the board or, you know, toward anything under the purview of the Board of Trustees, that would be appreciated.
And again, Supervisor Hathaway, you are the leader of the committee.
Okay, then, may I finish my comment? May I finish? May I direct a comment to the board, please?
She's got any comments?
May I direct a comment to the board?
Please, Pat, conclude your comment to the board.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that when you do the minutes for this meeting, I don't want to see in a situation where you are reflecting all of Mr. Abby's comments without mine being able to rebuttal because it is untrue what he is saying, absolutely untrue. Thank you for your time and that's all I have for tonight.
I want to have a chance to respond.
Well, Abby, I understand, but it's not, Abby...
You didn't shut her off, shut her off. So I should have the right to respond to it because this is calling into question my integrity.
Abby, there's another time for public comment later in the meeting and you can use that time, those three minutes if you want to, to speak to this issue, but you can't talk right now.
That's fine, I understand, but this is exactly the right venue. My local government is the right venue.
I understand.
To air my, what has happened to me and my wife, right here.
Yeah, I understand, but we have rules for public comments and you've had three...
But let me hold them to the same rules.
I understand. You can write to us if you feel that you have more to say than you can say in the meeting.
No, no, I want this for public consumption. They, when they treat me in front of the public and my neighborhood, in front of the rest of the residents and owners and my community, I don't want to write a letter which goes into the closet and nobody sees it.
And Abby, Abby, I'll tell you what, why don't we plan to talk outside of the meeting and I can try and help you figure out a way to communicate with the board, okay?
That's fine, what can you do and talk follow some...
So are there other, are there other members of the public who would like to comment remotely?
We have Steve King followed by Jillian Kay. Steve?
Hi, yes, this is Steve King, Syo Township. My apologies for my throat, I'm overcoming a cold, so when I clear my throat, that's it. I did want to echo the sentiments of a couple of other people regarding the zoning for, potentially, they've called it a party barn, but having relatives with homes in northern Michigan who have experienced this type of thing, that's really what it becomes. And I think what's happening is they're trying to get around ordinances and zoning. And I would like to, you know, caution the board to make sure that the zoning is correct. Zone for commercial, which is what this used, it really looks to be, then there are different things that need to be taken into account. Agriculture has different coverage and knowing this in personal experience, that's really where that part needs to be taken care of, is the correct zoning, the correct usage. And then, you know, the usage of that could be covered correctly by law enforcement, fire department, et cetera. So that's that one part of it. Secondly, I'd like to mention something about the upcoming part of the Zebra Walkway and having, you know, live out in this direction and mentioned previously that driving westbound on Miller Road to Zebra and then continuing west to Dexter and Arbor Road, the current fence line that's up there is very much a hindrance to being able to view oncoming traffic from the left or the south. And, you know, continuing this walkway down the other way really doesn't seem to fit a purpose, something that I can see on my own because the population in this area, north of Miller, towards Palmer Road, is very light in creating a walkway which is more well-suited for higher traffic walkways in the city, doesn't really seem to have a good purpose or a reason for being invested into. I'd just like to raise that question and see if I can find out what the real end goal of this walkway is because for, you know, the 30 to 40 years that I've lived in Syo Township, I don't see how a walkway in that area would be very highly trafficked or a very good use of public funds. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for the time.
Derry, anyone else?
Jillian Kay followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Jillian?
Good evening. I'd like to speak about the potential event barn on Dexter and Arbor Road. Reviewing the applicants, the project and whatnot, it just seems that it's bypassing, it's putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. It's really about having an event barn rather than following the protocol of what an agritourism business is. It was, the agritourism business was set up to help farmers because as you know, farming is a dying industry. It's been taken over by big business or big ag, excuse me. So, you know, there are certain rules on federal USDA, state and even local. I sent an email regarding this yesterday and breaking it down. So the Herons have a great plan. I really like what they want to do. However, they're not farmers now. They don't have vineyards, they don't even have vines in the ground, they don't have grapes and their whole process or the whole project is to have a winery. You cannot have a winery without grapes. You cannot, you cannot make, and you can't have grapes without vines. And as an avid gardener, and I was a farmer for five years back in the early 90s, I know how hard it is to farm. I also have my own grapevines and they don't do very well in this climate. So I wish them the best with that, which brings me to, you know, the township is governed by statute, ordinances, rules, policies and procedures. And a lot of the things that have been going on for a long time in Syo have not been following statute ordinance and so on. And we can see this even with our board right now. So, you know, it's amazing how there's some rules regarding public comments and what shouldn't and shouldn't be said, but what it really boils down to is that we're not following what needs to be done to take care of residents in our township. For example, there's a Parks Management Committee that was created, never went in front of the board and it's in full swing, I guess. I mean, I'm still looking into it, but again, not following the rules where things need to be transparent and open, just like when you were campaigning, you promised. So let's get our act together and start following procedures and statutes and ordinances for the best of all residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Jillian. Jonathan Greenberg? Jonathan?
Hello, good evening. I'd like to thank the board for continuing to support public comment and public participation over Zoom. Most of us or many of us now spend our days at work this way.
Can you use the audio?
Jonathan, you're cut out. We can't hear you, Jonathan.
I froze. Hello? Were you able to...
Okay, we can hear you now.
Oh, my apologies. I don't know how far I got. I was thanking you for allowing the continuation of Zoom meetings. Because of the difficulty, I would like to ask for 24 seconds back. That's just a joke, I'm kidding. I just want to say thank you as well. I agree with the other community members who expressed concerns about the approach on the barn, the party barn. It would be much more palatable if the number of people they're asking for, which is 150, was based on something other than, we heard that we could fit as much as 150 people in here. I think that all of the neighbors would find, and I heard it talked, this issue talked around, but it seemed like a simple solution is just say you'll only have 50 people and, or, you know, whatever's acceptable and not necessarily enough to fill up the entire barn. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no more hands up at this time.
Thank you. Let's move on to reports. These are an important feature of the board meetings where we receive status summaries of township activities and announcements of noteworthy upcoming work items. Out of respect for everyone's time during the meeting, I ask that we reserve detailed policy presentations for planned discussions. And as a reminder, reports are not a time for public comment. I believe we have a written report from...
Utility Director's Report is there. Steve is out of town, that's why he submitted a written report rather than presented in person.
Okay. Well, why don't we proceed then with the Administrator's Report?
All right. Briefly, just an update. I'm continuing review of current township policies and preliminary development of additional topical areas that may actually need some policy development. We've had some conversations along those lines and that will continue. I have an ongoing review of current budget and financial policies and practices to complete the current fiscal year and also some preliminary structures for the new fiscal year that will begin April 1st. I'm continuing my review of township contracts and that's a work in progress, making sure when contracts are going to expire, when they're up for renewal and so on. Firefighters union contract negotiations have started. Is that new agreement, I believe it's an April 1st or March 31st expiration, so we need a, we need a new one. I'm sorry?
Mayfair.
Mayfair, okay. Too many agreements all at the same time. I have a request into BSNA Software to develop a proposal for cross, for staff cross-training on all of our systems and I'm working with them just to see what capacities they can provide and what kind of a cost there is and time requirements and those types of issues. I have completed with the fire department and therefore have completed all of my meet and greet sessions and I would like to say thank you to all of the employees of the township. These were excellent conversations and gave me a tremendous insight into the organization as a whole and what additional support that we need. And I would also speak to the residents of the township. As a reminder to all residents of Syo Township, applications for the trustee seat are still being accepted until tomorrow. The deadline is tomorrow, January 26, 11:59 p.m. It is an online submission. You can go to the township's website and submit your application at that time. We would ask that the application include a cover letter and a resume and any additional materials that you would care to submit. Currently, as of right now, we have five applications that have been received. So anyone else who may be interested, you still have an opportunity to do so if you are interested in submitting it before midnight tomorrow. And then lastly, on that process, we will work towards presenting materials to the Board of Trustees for its consideration and next steps at the next meeting of February 8th. And that is my report.
Well, you've already covered the Ad hoc Appointments Committee, which is the next report. Do you want to report on the Budget and Finance Committee or is there no report for that?
Budget and Finance has not met. I will look to schedule a meeting in February.
Trustee Noel, Delman?
Okay, this will be a short report. We will be having a Syo Town Hall to update residents and others on the recent well testing. This will be on February 17th at 7:00 p.m. by Zoom. There will be a panel discussion with Keith Gadway, our environmental consultant, and representatives from Eagle and representatives from the Washtenaw County Environmental Health Department. So there will be a lot of factual, scientific data shared by everybody on this committee. We're having a pre-meeting, meeting tomorrow with everyone to plan the meeting. So the next card meeting is Tuesday, February 1st next week. Thank you.
And I'll defer to, oh, I guess someone reporting for the Lockalpine, Sam Berry?
Good morning. I just thought that between the two of us, so one of us would cover it.
Oh. Why are you covering it?
Exciting, okay. We met last week, Lhasa, and we're moving toward... We met last week, Lassa, and we're moving toward actually ACH payments, thanks to Sandy Eckler, and also finished up the meter replacement project. So, we will be meeting here in Syo Township for the rest of the year. And we are represented by Will, the supervisor, myself as clerk, and also Patrick McLaughlin as the Syo rep on that board. For the clerk, couple of updates. You will see a notice of a right to referendum on becoming a charter township if you read the Washtenaw County Legal News. And that is because I'm required to publish this per MCL 42.3A because the decennial census has been completed. The Secretary of State notified me to let me know we have more than 2,000 people. We've known that for years, but I just want everybody to know that this posting is required to be in the paper twice. And it's got options on a referendum to becoming a charter, and I wanted everybody to know this is just standard procedure, that there's been no further discussion at the board or anywhere else about the pros, cons, or timeline of ever undertaking that. With finance, taking another week with David to get together a proposal for the board for February 8th. As you know, we've been looking at different needs, different additional skills to complement the ones that we currently have in-house, and David is, is helping to focus in on what the short-term objectives are to give him some more time to assess for some of the longer-term needs, both across finance and the other staffing areas. So, that will be coming next board meeting. Regarding the potential special May 3rd election, today was the deadline for petitions to place proposals on the ballot. We have none. January 28th is the last day to file recall petitions, and February 8th is the last day that the school, district, or the county might submit a ballot proposal. So, by February 8th, we'll know for sure if we will have a May 3rd election or not. I want to thank Donna and Will for convening with me, the Township Election Commission. We met yesterday. Special thanks to Deputy Clerk Mary Ellis. We set our precincts for the next 10 years. There's the new precinct map up there. And I'll be bringing a resolution to the board on February 8th, our next meeting, to set our polling places. So, the Election Commission establishes precincts, the board sets polling places. So, that's what we'll be doing at the next meeting. And then after that point, we'll be sending out a mailing to every voter in the township with their new provision.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer?
Yes, I have some interesting facts related to this year's tax collection, i.e. tax year. To date, we have collected $49,186,600. That's to date, and we still have a ways to go. And that, this is a heavy time coming up. So, I just thought it was interesting to pass that on. There's a lot of money that goes through these doors. The other thing I wanted to also bring to your attention, a few months ago, one of our public wanted to know about paying like online ACH. We do have that option through Invoice Cloud. And again, this is a summary that is very interesting. Year-to-date, for the summer taxes, 465 residents have used it for their summer bill, which is $2,900 plus in dollars and cents. In the winter tax, to date, 445 have used that service to the tune of 1.433, give or take. Water and sewer, 1,749 residents have used it to date, and that's just under $1 million in payments. So, it is out there. It's Invoice Cloud, and if you go on the website, you can get the information. You need to sign up, check with our utility department with any questions that you have. So, it is a service being used, and it does continue to grow. And that's it for tonight.
Broadband Task Force, Trustee Jerome?
Just to give a brief update, because I know there's been a lot of questions about where we are, and I did respond to a letter from a citizen, but there's actually three efforts that are going concurrently. One is CMC, which is Connecting Communities, and which has provided a certain number of households for broadband. The next was ARDOF, which is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. And then finally, and the one that we've been talking about most recently, is the gap-filling process that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners has supported using a combination of ARPA funds and county funds to the tune of, I think it's $14.7 million, with an additional $800,000 that's been dedicated to accessibility for individuals that may have trouble accessing broadband. I did want to note that that gap-filling program is being administered by the county. So, they have hired Mr. Gregory Dill as the Washtenaw County Administrator, and then there is DCS Technology, which has been hired as a project manager, because we are in control and are running that project from a Washtenaw level. So, that's why you have that. Once again, that's in place, and then they'll be awarding those contracts. We have not met for the broadband group, we don't meet until March, but however, they're working on awarding the contracts to the four individuals or the four companies that bid on the gap-filling portion of the broadband initiative for Washtenaw County as a whole. So, I just wanted to share that information with people so they had a little bit better idea of what's going on. Unfortunately, infrastructure takes a while. This is not, you're not going to see something next year. This is going to take a while to put in place, and hopefully, as I say, I can give updates as we continue to meet with regards to progress in particular areas.
Thank you. The next is Parks Advisory Board.
We did not meet last month. We're meeting in February, and we are working currently on producing materials for the budget and development and review of the Van Kurler property.
Thank you. The next is the Land Preservation Commission. Do you want to cover that as well?
They did not meet in January.
Okay. Planning Commission, Trustee Corto is not with us this evening, and I believe there was a hearing on the Heron Farm Proposal. There was also, I think, another agenda item, the proposed heritage issue with, out on Marshall and Baker. And I don't know what else was on their agenda, but I know it was a long meeting. We do have an item from the Planning Commission on the agenda later on, and we have with us to talk to that, we have Doug Lewan, and I believe we have the developer from, or a representative of the developer for that. So, if there are questions about the Planning Commission, we could probably take them up then. Is there someone here to speak to the Sustainability Task Force?
I can speak to that briefly. The really fun news there is, as you might recall, we had the two graduate students last year from the School of Environment and Sustainability at U of M, and they helped us sort of get the task force set up, right? And we've now met, we now have five additional U of M grad students from the School of Environment and Sustainability who will be of support to the task force as their master's project. And so, they will be assisting with public engagement, education, eventually proposing the framework for a climate plan that will be aligned with Ann Arbor, and also, quite importantly, the climate, public engagement that is underway at the county. So, there's a nice connection with the county work. Syo will be hosting some of the public engagement sessions that, that the county will be leading. I'll just offer the observation. Given, given how smart and capable and passionate and driven these students are, we were wowed by how much two students did last year. And I think the Parks Group is having a similar experience with the natural features inventory that they had a student working on. I just think, two students, I, I just think it's a tremendous asset to the township. So, it's all great. Early days, way, way early days. We're going to, they're going to meet the task force at our next meeting in February. That task force is organized into five little work groups. Those students might align themselves to the work groups. We'll see, we'll see. Our goal is to help these students be successful in their master's project, because that comes full circle to just a tremendous contribution to the, to the, to this lovely township. So, really pleased to share that on behalf of Jacqueline Corto, who's the trustee rep, and Jan Culbertson is the PC Chair.
And you can roll right into Transportation Alternative Planning Committee.
Playing words, I like it.
There you go. Okay, so later today, we will be taking up Zeb Road Phase 4. I appreciate our resident Steve King earlier and his questions. You know, in COVID, we're probably a little behind the game in terms of, of really sort of communicating what's going on. The reason Zeb Road has been the priority is to connect the township to the border-to-border pathway system that is progressing along Huron River Drive. That pathway is already at Zeb Road coming from Dexter, and the next section is projected for construction. They're all tied up with Amtrak, so it's still a question. So, that'll connect from Zeb, this is the border-to-border, toward Delhi Metro Park. So, so, so that whole border-to-border is just a tremendous asset, and the Zeb Road pathway connects our residents to that wonderful sort of recreational opportunity. So, we'll talk about that later. Light Parks, we're working in partnership, it's just wonderful, around kind of that three-to-five-year look ahead, the funding strategies that go with it, working with the new administrator on sort of the budget impacts of all that. I will say, and it's just so great to have David in place now, there really is a need for the project manager. There's so many great things underway, the need for the project manager and the township to be assisting with all of this. There's other details, but an observation I would offer Supervisor Hathaway is sometime soon, it's probably a good idea to have both parks and pathways come with a more project-specific description. As we get ready for public input in the spring, the, the concept map, the vision of what these pathways might be, what the parks might be, is really progressing beautifully. And it's, so it might be a good idea, one of the February meetings to possibly put pathways, parks if they're interested on one of the agendas.
Great. Roads Advisory Committee?
We have this on the agenda as a discussion item later, so I'm not going to give a report. We're going to discuss priorities and seek direction from the board for the Roads Committee. That's it.
Well, I deferred on the Supervisor's Report, and I've had a request to update on the budget process. Basically, I think, and some people have alluded to this earlier in their reports, we are, we've sent out a message, a memo soliciting input from different departments and from different advisory boards and committees. And I know from the, the email traffic that people are busily compiling that information, and hopefully, we will be holding meetings with people to review the input in the next week, maybe next week and a half, and we'll have something to pull together and share with people after that. And with that, let's move on to the consent agenda. With the, one exception to the item that was pulled, the payment of the bills, we have the rest of the consent agenda intact. Is someone ready to move the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Moved by Flintoff, support, support by Jerome. Now, this, do we need to call a roll? No, we can just do it by voice vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Or opposed? Consent agenda is approved. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is Ordinance Amendments to Chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection. Do you treat these as two separate items, correct?
Correct.
Okay. They just travel together?
Correct. So, this is Ordinance Amendments to Chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection. You've seen this several times, and just a quick reminder that this is necessary to allow our fire prevention program to fully launch, have our code fully up to date. It also corrects part of our ordinance that was adopted in 2002 that had named the ZBA as the Fire Code Appeals Board. They, well, well, that had remained there. We learned the ZBA had never heard any fire appeals. We had done so few proactive fire prevention, it was just kind of an error that has been on books there. So, we've corrected it and instead added language about the independent fire board. Further, we took the fireworks regulations, reviewed it with the code enforcement officer, fire chief, and others, and determined that the fire chief and sheriff really are those officers that should be enforcing it, because fireworks happen at night when our code enforcement officer is not working. We've never had any real complaints about it, and so we've basically kept the fireworks regulations the same as they are, which are the most restrictive as the state allows us to be, which is how we've always been and will continue to be, but there were some changes in the law. So, it moves the fireworks into the fireworks prevention and protection. We did have the public hearing on both this and the accompanying ordinance amendment to Chapter 6. And just so you understand, the Chapter 6, Amusements and Entertainment, the next action we'll take simply repeals the old fireworks ordinance out of Chapter 6, and it, and, and the ordinance amendment to Chapter 18 adopts the new Fire Prevention and Protection Code as well as the new updated fireworks code. So, they'll all be in one fire prevention code. We did remove this from, and the related ordinance amendment from the agenda on January 11th. I know Trustee Corto, and thanks, Will, for following up, trying to conduct some more research into best practices related to open burning. The review's been partially completed, and the current consensus is that any additional improvements would be made via the chief's open burning policy and not by ordinance. Of course, if we find out that there's something we need to change, we can always come back and modify the ordinance.
So, that, the section that was highlighted to me, or to us, I guess, by David Fordham and someone who conducts prescribed burns was on page, can be found on page 78 of the packet, it's section 307, 11, prohibited open burning. So, I just wanted to make sure I was clear, because I was a little confused by the email exchange on this. So, the idea is that, because I think he, he pointed out that the exception under number one in this section should also apply to number two, in his, in his view. And so, the chief was saying that he thought he could do that in the policy and, or?
No, the one and two, our attorney didn't have the same reading
Oh.
as he did on that. And so, he, he, he was saying that, you're saying the exception should apply to number two as well?
I think that's the point that he was making, that
Right.
the exception should apply to number two as well as number one, and it wasn't clear from the language that it did.
Okay. We could make that explicit if you wish, and I could ask the attorney how to make that even more clear?
I think, I think his point was, you know, these two circumstances, similarly, you'd want to have the flexibility to deal with wild and flyer, wildland fire threats and And so you'd wanna have that flexibility in both circumstances.
Got it. So I won't try to wordsmith this here, but I will just make sure I state the intention is to make clear that the exception in bold under subsection one applies to both subsection one and two, correct?
Yes, I think that was his point.
And Chief Hood's already been in dialogue with Jan and Jackie last fall about the policy, and there doesn't seem to be anything that would prohibit a proper prescribed burns. Any other questions or comments?
Is someone ready to move the model motion? Oh, wait, we have to allow
Yes.
public comment. I guess we could move the model motion and then have public comment, but is there public comment?
We do have Steve King. Steve, you're on.
Yes, hi. Thank you for taking my question. My main concern is amendments to amusements, entertainments. There are four, maybe five times in the year we're in our neighborhood, the Wagner-Miller intersections. There's a lot of fireworks that go off on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, New Year's Day.
That's true, yeah.
And it's, it's very, very loud, very bright. And we get covered from the Wagner area with Pratt, all the way from, you know, North Maple through Craig Road, because there are at least three occasions where all of those areas were lit up, they lit up the sky. And my concern is, is that, you know, we have dogs, and it really disturbs them, and they continue on through 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM, makes it hard to get to sleep when you have a job the next day. And I, you know, having been a former teenager loving to shoot off fireworks out in the country, now that I'm mature with, you know, grown children, my concern is that, you know, there's a lot of those going off, the loudness of them, the brightness of them, and the inconsiderate nature of how they're being shot off may not be adjusted, because, you know, there's a lot of things on those, those holidays that our police force needs to take care of, and that might be the lower number of them because of the other things going on. I'm hoping we're adjusting our practice to this, and looking forward to it. Thanks, thanks for letting me talk.
Are there, are there other comments?
We have no other hands up. Oh, no, we have no other hands up at this time.
Do you want to respond?
Sure. Thank you for that comment, Steve. On page 80 of the packet, you'll see the prohibition. Consumer fireworks may not be used on any days of the year except those which are listed here. That's consistent with our prior ordinance, that is, as restrictive as state law allows. State law does not allow us to ban them altogether. So you will see, for example, the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until 11:45 PM on each of those days. This is as restrictive as we can be. What I think gets to Steve's point is that prior, our prior ordinance had the code enforcement official as the official responsible for enforcing this. So a call the next day to the township office, to Doug, of course, I go through with Doug, he has no records of these, because when people call, they need to pick up the phone and call the sheriff or call the fire department and get immediate enforcement out there. So hopefully, that will help. I would suggest that we should do some education with the sheriff's department and the fire chief to just let them know that we do want them to prioritize us.
Is there a way, I'm sure there's a way, what about around these periods of time, somehow putting education out there on the website? I know people may know this, but
That's a great idea, Donna.
it's just a good reminder.
Yep.
Because so many things like this, we can only go so far because of state law.
Right, right. It's a great idea.
Are there, if there are no other public comments, is someone ready to move the adoption of the ordinance amendments to Chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection as proposed?
So.
Moved by Palmer, support by Noel. Now, this, do we need a roll?
Yes.
Yes, we do. All right. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Ordinance amended, thank you.
That brings us to Agenda Item I, two, ordinance amendments to Chapter Six, Amusements and Entertainments. Clerk Quinta?
This simply repeals our old, now outdated fireworks ordinance.
So it is the companion decision to
Correct.
the one that we just made. If there are no other comments, are there comments from the public?
There are no comments at this time.
In that case,
I'll.
You'll move the model motion?
I'll move.
This to adopt the ordinance amendments to Chapter Six, Amusements and Entertainments, and Chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection as proposed?
Excuse me, Will, if I may?
No.
It should read, "To adopt the ordinance amendments to Chapter Six, Amusements and Entertainments as proposed."
As proposed, okay.
My apologies.
Yes, I was, as I read it, I was thinking, didn't we just do that?
We did.
All right. With that change, is there a second?
I'll support.
Okay, so moved by Palmer, second by Jerome. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted.
All right. That brings us to new business, and we changed the order of this somewhat, so if people will turn to Items J7 and J8. This is Zeeb Road Pathway Phase Four Construction Contract. It's Item J7.
You know, if Matt Parks is with us, we gotta elevate him to a panelist so we can
Yes. Is there anyone else who's presenting, or is it just Matt?
Matt's the lead.
Okay.
And Will, if I could, just one procedural reminder, on the roll call, there are certain votes that are required to be roll called, but on any vote, any member of the body may simply say, "I would like a roll call vote," and then it's done by roll call.
If you're missing the roll call, you can call out and ask for
Right.
Good to know.
Re-instated.
Good to know.
Okay. So Item J7 is the Zeeb Road Pathway Phase Four Construction Contract. And Matt, if you would like to present, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, board. In your packet, should have a letter recommendation from us dated, forgive me, my letter, January 18th. I'm happy to announce, we had quite a bit of action on this important project. Seven bidders, actually eight were submitted, one was, missed the cutoff time. But seven bidders is pretty outstanding for a project this size, and proves that getting, getting things ready and designed and out to bid in the winter months is always, always fruitful. So this was a quality-based election, so although price is heavily considered, it isn't the only thing that we looked at when we opened bids. Needless to say, LJ Construction, who has done the previous three phases, was the low bidder and obviously are very well qualified. I think all three phases they previously done, they've come on, in on time and under budget. They're qualified. But I will say, all of the people that submitted, all the contractors are very capable, and we thank them for preparing detailed bids. The bid tab was attached, very close. I will say, the engineer's estimate was slightly over a million dollars. The two bids came in, just LJ, just north of $900,001, around $950,000. So very competitive bids, considering the market. We've seen bids come in way high lately, materials and labor increasing, inflation's definitely playing a pretty major role. So these are excellent bids, excellent contractor. Our recommendation is to move forward with LJ. Part of the reason why this is an important contract is their first step will be to start with some of the tree clearing, and we, the design incorporates a lot of carefully planned design to minimize the amount of tree impact. But those trees need to be down and taken out before the March 31st deadline for the Indiana bat. And so we would like to get this recommendation approved, contracts executed, so the contract to mobilize in March. I got another item about our services, but we'll plan on some public meetings here in the near future, should the board move this forward tonight. So we're recommending, as we typically do, the amount of $912,858 with a small contingency budget. In the past, we've never tapped into those, but it's always good in case you run into an unknown, so our recommendation is to approve this as outlined in our letter.
Are there comments or questions from members of the board? Trustee Vogel?
Yeah. Tap, so I really do want to recognize the very, very good work that OHM continues to do for this township in its full-service engineering role. I appreciate a point Matt made in a conversation earlier today, that the excellent field work, the excellent field presence that OHM provides contributed to a very competitive bid from LJ, because they know they can count on a really solid partner with OHM. So, so that's really great. There is a funding strategy, and I'm actually gonna do it now, because this is the big bulk. Basically, this project will be the high, just the high side of a million dollars. And Tap is making this recommendation in terms of a funding plan, and it's gonna require a friendly amendment to, I think it's this motion, the fiscal impact. We're basically gonna suggest the wonderful partnership with Representative Donna Lozinski in securing the 1.5 million for pathways. 750 of that is dedicated to extending the Zeeb Road Pathway to the border-to-border. So Tap's recommendation is to allocate the 750 to Phase Four. We got another funding plan for Phase Five, so put a pin in that. So the 750 from the Lozinski grant goes to Phase Four. We're gonna, and this is where the amendment's gonna be required. We're gonna suggest that the, that we draw 100,000 from the township's road fund. That's the fund that's been in place since 2014. It's an assessment of, what is it, on $85? Per parcel. 10% of that is allocated to non-motorized pathways. It's my understanding, it's my note on this, the current balance of the non-motorized portion of the road fund is approaching 489,000. So we're gonna access 100,000 of that with the board's approval for Zeeb Road Phase Four. That means the draw from the park and pathway millage is only, I'm gonna round this up, 215,000. 215,000.
Across both these items.
Across both items. Here's what I want to recognize. When our residents passed, when we built the case for the park and pathway millage, we promised our residents we would leverage dollar for dollar. We are overachieving that by a country mile. The park and path, Zeeb Road Phase Four will be paid for 80% with non-millage dollars. Only 20% of that cost will be covered by the millage, which is just really great. And Parkland Plaza, it was about 30%, maybe 35, because we had those four great community partners. Zeeb Road Phase Three, we had the two previous grants, the SIO match. There's residual for that that will feed into Phase Four. So I just want to recognize Tap and for the great funding strategy, the partners that have emerged across the community. So basically, we'll, we'll just have to make a friendly amendment on the fiscal impact to include the 100, approval of the 100,000 out of the non-motorized portion of the township road fund.
I think it probably, the language would have to go in the motion itself.
May I take a stab at what you just said? Please. To award the contract for Zeeb Road Pathway Phase Four construction to LJ Construction in the amount of $912,858 with contingency of 50,000 for unforeseen circumstances, to be paid for from 208753978, funded by the $750,000 MEDC grant that is pending, $100,000 from four, fund, 400 fund balance for non-motorized transportation, and the remaining 112,858 from the fund 208 fund balance.
200. The last number you said is
I think we're gonna
Oh, I see.
This is the first item, yeah.
Got it, got it. Okay. Is the Lozinski grant coming through MEDC?
It is pending through MEDC, is my understanding.
It does come through
It does come through MEDC, interesting.
It's called a Michigan Enhancement Grant.
Yeah, earmark grant.
Got it. Okay, that sounded good.
And, and the only thing I would just say, you know, it is pending, and so presuming that, you know, it is proposed and that we accept it to appropriate the full 750,000 to construction, I don't know if there's any, you know, requirement that it be spent a certain way, but.
Well, it's, it's a requirement that it be spent on this
The Zeeb Road
in this project.
Correct, but I didn't know if there's any particular activities.
No, and would, now to answer the question, went it over here to Phase Five. Phase Five, so Phase Four will be this summer, which was our promise to Representative Lozinski. She went to bat for us, she delivered, with the understanding it would happen this summer. We are on track. I mean, just really exciting. Board needs to just have tucked away. Then you got Phase Five. Phase Five's a big old deal. You gotta get a big old retaining wall, cross Peters Road, come down to the river, get across the river, come up into sweepsters, across sweepsters, and they are definitely playing ball with us. Then you gotta get across Amtrak, which is like climbing Mount Everest, apparently. And then, once you cross those railroad tracks, border-to-border is right there. Border-to-border is gonna be paralleling those tracks heading toward Delhi. The board already approved, OHM, pointing to Matt on the screen over there, to do the long lead engineering work for Phase Five, because there's a whole bunch of permitting you get into when you touch that river, and when you start dancing with Amtrak. So all of that work is underway. Matt will be coming to the board later, late spring, early summer, with the results of that preliminary work. And at that point, it will potentially be a proposed contract for the engineering work for Phase Five. Here's what's really important for you, the board, to know. We also, and the administrator, we also, you also, we also approved OHM to do the layers of work required to submit for a federal TAP grant. TAP is a federal acronym, it's a bucket of money, it's a bucket of federal money for transportation alternative planning. The reason we, it's too much detail. So that is also in work. When Matt, in late spring, early summer, OHM comes back with its preliminary work on Phase Five, it will be coming back with some prelim, some update on that TAP grant. Good with all that? You good with all that? That's my nickel.
Thank you.
It's quarters worth.
Yeah.
So we, we now have a motion. Has the motion been made?
I have a question, when she's not done.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion that
Yes, he's got a question, I think.
Well, you wanted to make it? No, I just want to, I just want to, I don't want to lose track of the motion that we formed.
I wrote it down.
All right, all right. Trustee Vogel.
I don't know if this is to Jane or Jessica, but for the Roads Committee, we probably should get a statement from you as to the amount of money currently in the pot and what is being used, extracted right now, just so we all know. Because we're trying to get a handle on what we're doing.
Yes, yes, that kind of financial stuff should be happening. It's why the cross representatives of our boards and commissions are so critical. Patrick Shields is the guy.
Okay.
He knows roads, he knows TAP, he's our LinkedIn.
Okay.
And he's all up to speed on this. So yes, the staff needs to support you with the actual dollar amounts. Patrick is the critical link. As TAP's plans progress, your plans progress, and we anticipate the budget planning together.
As we understand it, though, approximately it's 100 of 465.
Correct, yes, that 465, because it's a 10% of the revenues and fund balance.
That'll be verified, but that's the sort of...
Yes, it's very close. And it is the first appropriation this board would be making from that 10% set of...
It's on your question email, let's take that offline.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So there's about 4 million plus, right, in the Roads Fund right now?
It's close to a half million. It's 400, it's close to 490,000.
Jane is talking about the 10%.
You're talking about the 10%, I was talking about the Roads Fund from which the 10% is derived.
And we're in the process of collecting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get the actual number.
We'll get to that later.
Yeah, we'll get to that later.
I would move the model motion.
Okay, so the model motion, as amended, is moved by Jerome, seconded by...
Oh, I will.
Oh, seconded by Vogel.
Sorry, I don't mean to point.
Thank you. Thanks for helping me keep track, it's been bouncing around for this agenda. Are there members of the, are there other, before we turn to the public, are there other comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, are there any comments from members of the public?
We do have some comments. Steve King, followed by Rob Pattinson. Steve?
Hello again. I do have issues with this entire plan because as a longtime Huron River Drive cyclist, I have, I ride past that area of the border-to-border at least four times a week. Once every four times in the week, I see somebody on the pathway. I've ridden the pathway, and I've encountered somebody maybe one-third of the time. What my concern is, is the old saying of, which a man that once raised me said, just because you can, doesn't mean that you should. Just because we can say we can get to this, doesn't mean that we should. What you're looking at is, the old saying is, is the long pole in the tent. The long pole in the tent is trying to get over the river, get past Sweepster, and I see Matt smiling, he understands the term. It's very simple, the railways and all these other things are still things that are not considered. These are not solved, and these are very expensive things to get by. When I ride through that pathway, and I'm not as fast as I was when I was in my twenties, I don't see people using the pathway. So when I consider the millions that have been spent on this pathway to this point, and I do the math on how many people are using it, it's really expensive. And then when you consider Zeb Road being just a piece of it, and you're not even starting at middle of the road, you have to start farther down because residents do not want to just give up their land, other eminent domain, you've got a piece of the puzzle that you're solving for. This is not a solution. This is a nice-to-have, not a should-have. In the old project management days, we used to call it the Moscow List. Must-have, should-have, could-have, won't-have. This is a won't-have. You have to lose it for all of the other things that this township needs to have done to support the current residents for all the infrastructure we need. I really completely deny the fact that this is a necessary deal. The border-to-border, God bless him, Luke Kidder, but this is not a priority for me or anybody else. I ride Huron River Drive as a cyclist for the last 30 years. I will not ride that pathway. It's unneeded. I will not walk that pathway. It's unneeded. You're chasing shadows. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Steve. Rob Pattinson, followed by Bill Doherty.
Thank you. I realize that trustee Corto was not here tonight, so I will channel my inner trustee Corto and ask that the trees that are going to be harvested, not harvested, that are going to be removed for this project, I would ask that OHM and LJ work with Commissioner Jan Culbertson. She's got resources for reclaiming the lumber from these hardwoods that are going to be cut down so that they can be used on the building projects for pavilions and the different parks that are going to happen in the next year or two. You have a chance to recover some of the damage of losing the trees by reclaiming the lumber that they generate. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Bill Doherty, Bill?
Yes, good evening. I'm an avid cyclist, been riding our roads for the last 22 years, and will remain on the roads as another speaker just mentioned, because the pathways are too slow for a cyclist. So I just want you to please keep in mind that we still need those bike lanes. Wherever we have roads that don't have bike lanes, they should be expanded to include them, because road cyclists, you know, we're doing 15, 20 miles an hour, which is not fit for the bike path or for the walking path, the border-to-border, because those are the walkers, the dog walkers and joggers and so forth. And I have done that route on Huron River Drive quite a bit this last summer, and I have seen the traffic pick up as far as walkers and joggers, but certainly not bicyclists. We're staying on the road and will continue on the road, so just wanted to let you know that. And advocate for bike lanes, please. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kathleen Brandt. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt, SIO Township. I had a question, actually I have two questions. The first one is, there was a comment about a friendly amendment from the TAP Committee on adjustments for funding for this. Is that recommendation in writing? I didn't see anything in the packet. I don't see minutes from the TAP Committee from December. So is there something that substantiates that recommendation? So that's one question. And the second question is, when did the board approve OHM to do the pre-planning for Phase Five? I don't recall seeing that. Thank you.
We have no other heads up at this time.
Trustee Jerome?
I can't respond specifically to that question, but I would like to respond to some of the comments that were made. One, we have been in discussion with OHM with regards to possibilities for the trees and repurposing of the trees. The contract was bid in a particular way, but we're still looking at opportunities to do that. So the Parks Commission had in discussions at another meeting with OHM and TAP, talked about that opportunity, one. And two, I would recommend for anyone, I understand that the view that that's not being used as vigorously right now is because it dead-ends at Zeb Road. The continuation of the path is, was to be done this year, it can't because of contacts with, issues with Amtrak. I will say, if you want to go to the border-to-border website and/or Washtenaw County, they actually did a ticker on the pathway that registered tens of thousands of individuals using it. I actually use it daily, and I encounter minimally, minimally, 10 to 15 people always at any one time, and I only walk for a very short period of time. So I would vigorously, vigorously say that there are many people that are using that. And please, go look at the records, they actually did a study of it during the pandemic to demonstrate just how powerful and used that will it was. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Treasurer Palmer?
My neighbor across the road, I live at SIO Road, did walking when there was the shutdown, he has a dog, and he said he had to walk at 9:30, 10:00 in the morning. If he waited any later, it was like trying to walk on I-94. That many people, the paths are used, and you know, I hear that comment from someone I live with, nobody uses them. Well, depends on your time of day, and I understand Mr. King apparently does things at different times, so I can see where he's, you know, what he sees. I appreciate that, but it's used.
If I could add one more comment, too, as related to safety, I'd be very grieved. Actually, people, what they do right now is they actually park down at the Burnstone Preserve and walk up on the road to cross over the Amtrak track to get to the parking area, to get to and use the parking lot, in order they come from the subdivision. So it's actually quite unsafe as it is. So creating this pathway will help ensure safety of individuals to be able to access the B2B. I'm done.
Any other comments? Oh.
Yeah, I have a question for either Jane or Matt. Matt, where exactly, to as much as we know, is Phase Four?
Um, Phase...
Where?
Yep, Phase Four will take off exactly where it ended, so just at Mr. Kengus's driveway, and then continue north. And it's about 600 feet south of Peters Road is where we're going to terminate. There's a pretty deep ditch and drainage crossing, a steep driveway and retaining wall that have to be dealt with as part of Phase Five. And just to pile on that, Phase Five, we were authorized as part of Phase Four design to do some of the preliminary permit vetting, environmental stuff to basically just get milestones, timelines, identify permits, and get lead times out, because some of that, the Amtrak Eagle Permit with the river crossing, those take extreme amount of planning and permitting, so that was part of the Phase Four design. So Phase, actual Phase Five design, the detailed design has not started yet and has not been authorized.
Okay. And do we have all the easements or Plan A, Plan B for this entire stretch?
Yeah, there's, there's two easements that need to be finalized and signed, but basically in agreement, I've been working, well, everybody's been working hard on achieving those, but basically, one comment came back with one resident, and they're in agreement with that. There's an additional 27-foot easement off of the right-of-way, and there's an area where a path, the pathway's coming through and cuts by the road and then cuts out. The resident wanted to amend that easement just to make it a little narrower where the land wasn't needed. And then another applicant, actually, to save additional trees, wanted the pathway to come further into their property, so there's an add-on to the 27-foot easement. Both of those residents are very much motivated and agreeable, they just have to sign the outline, and those should be wrapped up in the next week or so.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Vogel?
Yeah, and I'll just address, I think it was Kathleen Brandt's question about, is this consistent with the TAP recommendation? OHM was keen to have this vote at tonight's meeting to get the steps in place for the work that's required during the winter. So the recommendation tonight is consistent and reflective of all the discussions at TAP in previous meetings. At February, we'll make a formal recommendation to allocate funds this way. So it is, it is consistent with all of our discussions, and we'll formalize that when we meet in February.
So TAP was one of several committees that did not meet because of lack of quorum in January.
Well, we met in January.
Well, you didn't meet in January.
But we didn't know this was going to hit the board agenda this quickly. We were anticipating we would have one more meeting, but then there was a sense of, we need to do this now to get the steps in place to enable the work that's got to happen during the winter.
And if I could just, you know, that would be obvious, the $750,000 grant is still technically pending, we fully accept, expect to get it, but at the point that we actually get it and accept it, that's another opportunity, Jane, to sort of firm this plan. Because we're, the way we're doing the motion right now is based on $750,000 that we haven't yet received.
I have a question.
Trustee Vogel.
Is there snow removal occurring on this pathway, and is there snow removal that occurs on the border-to-border trail?
That will be a function of the policy that has to get developed to guide park and pathway maintenance. It's going to be so important to get that policy in place so we don't fall in the trap of being too reactive, oh, do this, do that. We need a coherent policy, and Parks will be the lead on maintenance for parks and pathways, and they're charged with coming up with that policy proposal.
The intent, the intent is to keep the pathway clear. That's why we, last meeting, voted to purchase the equipment.
True, let me clarify.
Yeah.
To develop a policy.
Yes.
To address the clearing of TAP, SIO pathways. The border-to-border is not owned by SIO Township.
Oh, I didn't think that.
And the border-to-border is not cleared.
And you're not clearing necessarily about 365 days a week, or a year?
It is not cleared. The border-to-border is only cleared from the parking lot to the restroom in the west, in Dexter, Huron. It is not cleared from Zeb to Dexter, Huron, it's not cleared from Dexter, Huron to Dexter. I just want to be clear about that. That is not, we haven't, we haven't discussed that, it's not saying that we couldn't as a township take that on, but it is currently not cleared in any way, shape, or form. There is a portion of it that's cleared in Dexter itself, and part of that is done by the unit of housing that's nearby, as well as, I think there's a city function of that, I'm not totally clear on that, but that is the only area that is cleared on a regular basis.
I assume that you were talking about the SIO Township portion of the pathway.
The TAP side.
Well, I meant both.
Oh, did, okay.
I wanted to know about the border-to-border trail, too.
That, yeah, that is a separate question.
And I would assume it may matter how things are funded as well, with federal funding, if any federal funding, there's probably certain ADA clearance requirements? I don't know, it's just another thing to consider.
That's all got to go offline. There's a lot of work to be done there.
You mean, well, yeah, let's, we can develop path strategy.
I see there's more, more to this discussion about pathway maintenance than, yeah, than we're going to address right now.
Right, 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 right. It was right to make the decision about Parkland because it just serves such a resident demand, but, but it's so critical, and I think we're all beginning to grasp just how multi-layered this is. It needs a robust policy.
And now, yeah, absolutely. Okay, we should move on.
Yes, okay, so we have a motion. I don't think we have voted on it yet.
We've not voted on it, the second.
We have a second.
We had a public comment.
We've had a public comment. So now we may call the question, since this is, I'm assuming, since this is, includes funding, it's a roll call vote.
It doesn't have to, whatever you want to vote.
Well, okay, I would suggest that we have a roll call vote.
And who's second?
The second was...
The second was Vogel.
Okay.
Okay, so, call a roll, please.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintham? Yes. Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to item J8, and this, again, is something for Matt to speak to.
Yep, so the next item on the agenda is our construction and engineering services proposal. Basically, January 18th, it's dated, goes through the scope of services. It includes both OHM and our subconsultant, who SIO Township's been using in the past, GQ out of Yanherbor. A couple caveats or highlights out of this, and I don't necessarily spell it out in one of our bullets, but this project's got a couple complexities, and one being that it's going to kind of happen in two stages, as trustee Vogel and a couple others recognize, and Jackie definitely would if she was here. The trees have to come out sooner. We have a window that basically makes us do that by March 31st. We have to have a pre-construction meeting with our contractor and their subcontractor. We spent a lot of time, a lot of time, and Jackie did a great job working with us and our ecologists and others. And we're going to spend a little bit extra time this time working with contractors on how to do proper tree clearing, branch trimming to protect the trees, and we put those provisions in the contract. So we had budgeted a little bit of extra time to work with them to make sure it's done properly, as I know that is very important. The comment was made about... The comment was made about potentially saving these, um, the trees and using them and, um, trustee Jerome spoke on that. That is something that I am planning on hopefully spending some time with the sustainability committee and getting a policy put in place and making sure there's a plan. There's a lot of details that go into tree removal and things like what size, where do you want them, what sizes are they cut on, how are they stacked, how is the wood preserved? All of those details should really need to be outlined to the contractor prior to bidding. That said, our contractor is a very good contractor and I'm sure they're willing to work. So we'll, we'll, we'll budgeted some time to kind of work those details out. On top of it, aside from just the normal, I'll call them normal standard construction engineering services, the staking, the material testing, the inspection, we have time set aside for the road commission and the permit. There's a couple areas of this pathway that are adjacent to the roadway that need to be dealt with. And then also public meetings. One thing that we did as part of Phase Three, and we're really basing this on the level of service, SiO asked of us for the last phase, which I think went pretty smoothly, is we put together a video and, and a public meeting and did some public education and outreach just to make sure the public's aware, to make sure traffic control's properly in place and what to expect, as well as the residents. This section of pathway, the 2,700 feet, it impacts a lot more residents and driveways than the previous phase. So I would say there's some extracurricular above the normal standard scope of services that we would normally be doing on a, on a standard utility project. So that said, the fee outlines on, on, on the second page, what's OHM under construction engineering services and then what's G2. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but pending approval of this tonight, our goal is to get the, start moving contracts to LJ for execution and we should be able to get those back to the township for proper signatures and full execution in about two weeks.
Trustee Vogel?
Yeah, I'll offer a quick observation. And again, it's just a very positive reflection on OHM. I was initially concerned when I saw this number because in my mind, the ceiling is 15%. Border-to-borders experience, contract in general, construction in general, you don't want to go much beyond 15% for the construction management, project management of the effort. I think this is an exception and for this reason. It is because of the really great partnership with OHM in the field that LJ was able to come in with a lower bid. So what felt more fair to me as I was evaluating this is to assess 15% of sort of an average of the various bidders. And so I just took a million. Most, many of the bids came in high of that, a few bits came in low. 15% of a million dollar construction project is the 150 that's being proposed, 150,000. So I sort of walked myself through a thinking process that got comfortable with 150,900 for the construction management.
And Jane, just to add to that, we wrote this proposal and had it prepared even before we opened bids. And I mean, I think it's great that you guys got bids that came in under our engineer's estimate. That's our goal. Honestly, we kind of like to be the middle bidder when we come up with our engineer's estimate, but we tried to stay within the 15% of our engineer's estimate. That was really, uh, the goal. And obviously if, you know, we have, we would, if we would need to reduce that at all, we would just have to see where we could cut back a little bit, so.
So what we'll do, I'm sorry, I'll just make this quick comment. We will quickly now get a letter to all of the Z Road residents with this update. We'll partner with OHM to do the quick video. And I don't recall that we did a public meeting because we were sitting in the midst of COVID.
It was the video, yeah, we did the video.
The video really served a great purpose. It was on the website, we sent the link out. So we'll do those same two things and work continues to secure those last two easements that are, that are poised and ready, finish up that work.
Are there other comments or questions? Clerk Flintoff?
Yeah, I have a suggested, I did the amendment to the model motion and then a comment. It would be a motion to waive the township bidding requirements set forth in the township procurement policy and authorize the supervisor to accept the attached Z Road Phase Four Construction Engineering Services proposal from OHM advisors to be funded from 208753821 from fund 208 fund balance, period. My comment, Matt Parks, you do such a wonderful job for the township. I love working with you. I also know that we've had this conversation about how the township spends only about 19% of our expenditures on staff, a tremendous amount on outside professional consultants. One of the first things I asked David to look at is our contracting practice with our engineer, OHM, and with our planner, Carla Wartman, to make sure that we're getting the most competitive bid. Because time and time again, what we do is we waive the bidding process for OHM and for Carla Wartman. And I, I do know that with the project manager position that we've had posted for quite a while, you even helped inform that, Matt, with kind of what some of the duties and credentials would be for that person. So I don't think that there's going to be, I, I presume we're going to be working with OHM for a long time. That said, some of these tasks are things we should be able to do in-house in the future. And somehow I want to make sure that we can, if we don't have a competitive, competitive bid process each time, to at least competitively bid out for full-service engineering services periodically. And so I, I just share this as, as, as an example here. I'm very supportive of it, but I think it's a structural thing. I will remind the board of the $9,000 contract that we spent a long time discussing with Woodhill, a non-bid contract not so long ago. So just to give some perspective, the entire consulting budget for finance over two years has been $80,000 since April of 2020. And so I just want to put that into perspective when we go through for OHM and for utilities and some of these other ongoing no-bid contracts. That's it, Will.
Are there other comments from members of the board? Treasurer Palmer?
I just want to make the board, Kathy's very aware of this, I know, and the public that's attending tonight, that we have the pathways, the things we're doing for our citizens because of the dedication of OHM and Carla Wartman. They are, well, Carla Wartman just works with public entities and OHM, I know, has different divisions, but it's their dedication and passion is to why we have it. Sometimes the competitive bidding process isn't necessary, depending on your relationship.
Certainly.
Necessary with some consulting needs.
Right. I think we have a vote in front of us.
Well, we still have some comments. So is everyone on the board commented who would like to comment? Members of the public, are there members of the public who would like to comment?
No, no comments.
In that case, we do have a motion. It's been amended. Is, would someone like to make the motion? Made by Vogel, seconded by.
Possible.
Trustee Noel. I believe we can do this under voice vote, I think. So all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us back to.
Thanks for the great work, Matt.
And Matt, I realized after we shifted things around on the agenda that there's another agenda item that you might be interested in. I don't know if you want to stick around for it or not.
I definitely will, yes, Steve wanted me to, so I'm, I'm, I'm hanging, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, all right. So that brings us back to J1. That is the ordinance amendments to Chapter Eight, Animals.
This is the first time you're seeing this, just to introduce it. Chapter Eight, Animals. This is discussion only. I want to make sure that we identify any outstanding questions and confirm which officials and committees should further review this prior to returning to the board for proposed adoption. You may remember that early on in January 2021, we adopted a pet waste ordinance requiring people to pick up the pet waste when not on their own property. What this ordinance does is amend Section Two of the dogs, Section Two Dogs of the animal ordinance. And again, this proposed ordinance is quite simple. It corrects a deficiency in the current township ordinance that we've run up against before. It's likely the result of just an oversight years ago in that the enforcement provision itself was omitted. And so without the enforcement provision, we're unable to actually enforce our mostly off-leash dog, you know, sort of provision. So with this correction, the ordinance will be properly enforceable. Going to sit down with Doug, our code enforcement officer, as well as the sheriff's office for their input, as well as anybody else the board would recommend.
Is Jim Fink going to give input?
They already have. So the black line here is the result of the first attorney review and then we'll get input from the code enforcement officer, sheriff, and then a second attorney review.
I can respond to what you discovered about.
Thank you.
You know, like the control or the enforcement. We followed the state ordinance mandate and at that time.
Yeah.
Whatever they said is what we had to live with.
Certainly.
So.
There was no enforcement in the state ordinance or the state statute?
No, they control, the dog control. And so, you know, we, we stayed with those guidelines. But if times are changing and if it can be done, we should do.
Trustee Noel.
I've heard concerns from residents about lack of control of dogs that are off-leash.
Yes. And so how does this?
That's exactly what this would address.
This will be an improvement over our current.
Our current ordinance had no ability for us to enforce out-of-control dogs. So it is stray or at-large dog is the language. And then that provision, it's all in the double black line, double underline is the proposed language to be added.
Section B.
Thank you.
Dogs within the township brought or kept outdoors and when not, under the control or supervision of its owner shall be considered stray and or at large and less restrained, restrained by leash, electronic tether or other acceptable means or property in which the dog is being kept, except working dogs such as dogs, farm dogs, hunting dogs, and others such as dogs. Wow, that's a big sentence.
Yeah.
When accompanied by their, their owner or authorized agent and while actively engaged in activities for which the dogs are trained.
And then it adds, the violation is a municipal civil infraction penalty, which is our standard violation.
So they get a ticket, basically?
Well, yeah, it would go pursuant to Section One, so it would start as a ticket. It could be, you know, up to a misdemeanor punishable by up to 90 days. But it really would be an infraction. But if it escalated, it would go from there.
Are there any other comments from members of the board?
This is better than what the sheep farmers do, so let's go with this one.
Yeah.
Are there any suggestions in terms of?
Besides the code enforcement officer and the sheriff?
Yeah, whom else?
Anybody else we should be speaking with?
Humane Society?
I was going to say, that's what I just thought of.
I don't know. I don't know.
No?
I, I think you've got the people you need here.
Okay. I'm, I'm happy to reach out to the Humane Society, any kind of best practice.
What did you say, Donna?
You're a pet owner, you may have a little different.
Well, you know, I have three dogs, they're small dogs, but, and I belong to some dog training clubs, so yes, I've heard different things.
Okay.
All right, this is not an action item, so if, if we're done with comments, we can move on to the next item, which is also a discussion item. And this is key priorities for the Roads Committee, and I look for some attachment. There was, did I miss it? No?
No, there was none.
Okay, there was none, okay.
There was no attachment.
I wanted to be prepared, you know.
Well, so at the last meeting, which just occurred, we had, had a makeup meeting. The Roads Committee would like the board to define priorities for them. Right now, they think that the most urgent matters are to evaluate funding options, and this is number D in the charge for the Roads Committee. And make a recommendation to the board on whether or not we want to do a millage or another township-wide SAD, because the current township-wide SAD is going to be expiring pretty soon.
This year.
When is it exactly?
When's the 24?
The winter tax bill 2022 is what it is.
That's what I thought, this coming year is this year that you had to pay. So we need to move on it.
Correct.
Yes.
So we're ready to.
Yeah. Winter tax bill 22.
Whatever. I, I will say immediately, just get it out there because we'll have discussion, I oppose a millage. That it'll slam our farmers, it'll slam people who don't use the roads like, even like I do every day. This, this SAD has done a lot of work and it was well-planned, the overall plan, the ongoing funding. So just, just thoughts when we get ready to really get down to the nitty-gritty.
I'd like to hear from everybody as to where they stand up the concept of a millage, just where are you on it?
I would propose we look at the, the money we have and, and I would want to understand kind of what the ongoing projected costs are. You know, I, I don't know much about what the township-wide SAD was used for initially. I know there were certain roads to get paved and that there is, were some ongoing, you know, maintenance, but my understanding is we don't have a current plan of what the needs are. So that's one thing. Second of all, even though the collection will end in winter tax bill 2022, I, I think that that money, I'm wondering if there is still time to spend what has been collected. So I'm not of the mind to do either until I know that there's a need. Sorry to sound so blunt. But, but truly, I, I don't know enough about it to understand what it is that we would be paying for ongoing through the township-wide SAD.
Then maybe this whole group needs to have some, an educational session on that issue.
Or it may just be me, and that's okay. But, but honestly, because there is, you know, we have collected more than we have spent.
Yeah.
Time, so.
I think said differently. It's very appropriate as this 10-year assessment comes to a close that there's a reporting to the board of its use. What, what drove it initially, what projects have been completed, what projects are anticipated? I mean, the group's got to sort of build the case, right?
We're still learning.
Yeah.
Everybody in the group is learning.
Well, that, that's what I really noticed, that what I've noticed about conversations about this road assessment is, I always had this impression, it's like we talk about it like it's over there, but I've never sensed anybody's really got their arms around it and asserted a strategic plan and here's our intent and here's where going.
Yeah.
So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for this group to recognize what has been done and really to assert a plan going forward. And I think your real historians are both Patrick Shields and David Reed. And I mean, those are the guys, those are the guys who really have been involved with this from the get-go. But Kathy, it's a great opportunity for this group.
Yeah, it seems like it's a little turned around here. I mean, the roads advisory committee is asking for advice from the board, and I thought where you were going to go is saying, well, these are the things that the roads advisory committee sees as sort of, of all of the different parts, you know, on the list of charge items, these are the things that we see as high priorities.
I am going there.
Oh, okay, so all right. Maybe we can work through the list instead of getting stuck on a particular item.
So the roads?
Well, and I would just say briefly that I agree with the clerk. I can't develop a funding mechanism for a project that I can't develop a cost for because I don't know what the project is. So I think we need to do that sort of background and develop exactly what we're trying to accomplish with the roads. And then we would look at the cost associated with what we're trying to accomplish, and then we would look at how we would try to fund that cost. It's a carton horse, it's a carton horse issue to me.
Well, carton horse, you have to go on some kind of.
Appreciate. I do appreciate, Kathy, that you need more analysis of how the money's been spent, and that's something I can work on with David. We'll figure that out, because.
We're going to need to.
Not in one place.
Some of the initial priorities, but let's get all.
Yeah, to put it together in a meaningful way.
Okay, so basically, the two top priorities that have been established are this, you know, evaluate our funding options regarding this millage or possible township-wide SAD. I mean, first, we've got to pull all of that together. The other top priority would be this review of the county road commission proposals for matching fund projects.
Yes, absolutely.
And rank those projects.
Absolutely.
Okay, so these are the two issues that we've identified right now as possibly the highest priorities for right now.
Review and provide a recommendation for, you know, like the culvert, any of the road agreements that come from the roads commission would be helpful.
Okay. Now, there's another issue looming, which was the Park Road SAD. And that was, has never, we've not discussed that as a group ever. So are we okay putting that down the list a bit right now, while we focus on these two issues?
What was bumping it up?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, so I think Linda Smith believed that this was a high priority for the township based on discussions with Will. That's my perception.
Okay, so the real thing that's bumping it up is that it's related to the Trailwoods subdivision. So Trailwoods has a development agreement with the road commission that they will pave Stabler Road and create crossings over the, I guess, the Honey Creek. And then they'll pave the portion of Park Road that their, that sort of fronts on, or their properties sort of fronts on. And that only gets you, you know, halfway down Park Road from Stabler Road. So that leaves that section between there and Zeeb Road as a dirt road to a paved road. So if you were going to get the sort of maximum economy and scale out of the situation, you would try and have the paving continue at that, at the same time that they're doing their work, to continue all the way to Zeeb Road. Likewise, the Trailwoods project has, as a part of its development agreement with the township, a commitment to create non-motorized pathways, both along Stabler and Park and through the middle of their development. There's a woods, and this pathway would go through the woods and north to connect with an existing pathway segment that comes down from Jackson Boulevard to the east of Menards and comes to actually an existing footbridge that currently goes nowhere because the pathway isn't built. But once that section of subdivision is built, that pathway will continue down. And the idea is that that pathway likewise could connect to a pathway that would then bring you out all the way to Zeeb Road. So there's an opportunity to sort of, kind of piggyback on the Trailwoods development agreements for both road paving and pathway construction. That's what is sort of driving the timing of the project. And not to belabor the point, but if you have this paving completed by the Trailwoods subdivision, it will connect to the rear entries to both of the subdivisions, the French Country Estates and Arbor Point. So if you don't, at that time, pave the dirt portion, it'll create more traffic through those subdivisions by virtue of people trying to connect to the, stay on the paved surfaces and avoid the dirt road.
Supervisor, do people do that?
Do people do that?
Yeah.
Of course they do.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Oh, trustee Vogel.
So what I hear in that, Kathy, is the timing for a consideration of an SAD for that last section of Park Road, the timing is really informed by the timing of Trailwood meeting its obligations on its frontage on both Stabler and Park. Two other data points that I think are important. Arbor Farms, in their bylaws, Arbor Point, in their bylaws and covenants, already have some agreement of a contribution to a road SAD for that paving. French Country does not, that's a data point. The other data point, from a TAP concept map point of view, the whole loop in the southwest quadrant, we have, we have a potential pathway farther west with Woodview, comes out to Stabler, partnership with that developer gets you along Stabler and into Park. Park gets you back to Zeeb, which is the backbone. So in paving that last section, as Supervisor Pathway said, you also get, you would, we would also look to have it include the final segment of the non-motorized pathway all the way to Zeeb.
So there's a lot going on here, and probably more than we should get into in this conversation, but there's a lot more driving it than simply a conversation between me and Linda.
The other observation I'll offer, it gave me pause when the clerk said, I'll work with the administrator to do something. This is the role of the administrator, to sort of figure out where the township voice is in that two-year period without a manager. I remember partnering with the supervisor and having meetings at the road commission, and they were so thrilled to have somebody to connect to in Syo Township, because the former manager was a consistent communication touchpoint. You two need to decide who's that going to be.
Well, we already assigned it to the manager.
So it is you.
The board.
Then I think that's a really key interface that's got to get reestablished. And then as you continue your assessment, state of the township, you look forward to staffing needs, we really need to think more broadly about the full range of our boards and commissions. Again, such a tremendous strength in this township are the residents, the resident volunteers on these boards and commissions, and they've got such experience and expertise they bring. Don't want to do anything to compromise that. But there is an important question to take on, what little bit of staff support do you need at the road commission? What does TAP need? What does Parks need? It's a bigger question than just Parks and Pathways, is what I'm saying. How, what minimum amount of staff support would really enable that group to be successful?
No, I'm wondering, David, if you might want to attend some of these roads advisory committee meetings, because we're just getting going. We've only had three meetings, and we're just getting going, and it's all, everything's kind of coming together, so. They're always on the first Wednesday of the month at 6:30.
And it's a practical point, Will, you know, the documents you guys just flagged, you know, make sure, get those to Kathy.
Which document is that?
You talked about the development agreement, the HOA covenant, you know, those things. I think that you were holding those, were working on the park.
Why don't you and, why don't we plan to sort of get together and talk about these things?
Just to go through.
And I can make sure that I can convey to you whatever documents I have that would be helpful. I think you also have some other resources, you know, Joe.
Oh, Joe Maynard.
Yeah, Joe Maynard.
He's going to speak at our next meeting.
Yeah, I think he's very knowledgeable about the early thinking about the Park Road SAD.
I wonder if we're at a point in this where we should now take it offline.
Yeah, I think.
We should now take this offline. We're getting into a level of important detail.
Well, do you, do you feel like you have enough direction from the board?
Well, okay, so I think, I hear from all of you that there's agreement on working on the recommendations to the board for either the township-wide SAD or a millage. And I'm hearing some people don't want a millage.
Well, I think there's also a question about sort of backing up from the funding source.
Not the right question yet.
What, well, I sensed that people wanted to hear sort of how the money was spent from the road SAD.
So they want a report.
They want kind of a summary, a report of what happened and sort of what's proposed. And I don't know that the road advisory committee is in a position to say this is what's proposed going into the future, because it seems like you're still sort of getting your feet.
Exactly.
But I think, you know, in some ways, it would be a sort of, you know, if we were to go forward, these are the categories of things that might be included in, you know, expenditures from some funding source aimed at roads. And the other thing that you asked about, I think is actually going to be, coming up very quickly, we're going to be having recommendations from the road commission for projects for this coming year.
Yeah, that'll be great.
And so I think that's a conversation that probably will happen sooner than the road funding one, but both of them need to move forward. And the Park Road SAD, I think even the one meeting that I attended of the roads advisory committee, the first meeting, there was some discussion about how responsive the township needed to be to the timing of the developers' construction schedule. And so that's, maybe that's a good question to start with, you know, should that be driving the townships moving forward with this as much as it was?
I really think the two key resources for you, Kathy, are the supervisor and the administrator. The administrator with the future role with the road committee, the administrator, the supervisor, given all of his background. Jessica, help me understand how you see your role in this.
Well, thanks for asking that twice. The funding analysis about what has been spent, what's left, all of that, the fiscal analysis, David and I have been talking a lot about the types of fiscal analyses we're not able to do in-house.
I see.
So.
Helpful to understand.
That would be helpful.
I know.
Okay.
So anyways, the other thing that came up, Will, and it was kind of an observation during the four neighborhood SADs and something we talked about somewhere along the line in one of our meetings. I would recommend, and David, this might be something you can help the roads committee with, that we have a bid for whoever our engineer is going to be to help with neighborhood SADs, if it's our engineer or whoever, because kind of doing it piece by piece, and I think we've talked about some of this, Will, because, and you may remember, Donna and Kathy, a couple of years ago, we started paying WASHNA engineering to do some of that project piece, and we learned a lot about how to communicate better with neighbors, and it's, you know, with the transition, lots of things going on, COVID. But I think that putting together kind of specs of what we expect that engineering, project management support to neighborhood road development to be, and then kind of set up those expectations. So whether it's the project manager, David, or the project manager plus an engineer doing that, or a volunteer.
Okay. Just a time check.
Yes, we are, we have spent some time on this discussion. I think it's been helpful, I hope it's been helpful.
Yeah, it's been helpful.
Thank you.
One comment, if I may. You asked about the board meetings, now the next one is February 2nd. Is that, is that correct?
I'll have my calendar with me.
That sounds right.
Okay, I've already been asked to attend that one.
Oh, good.
So that one's already scheduled.
Okay.
This is the roads advisory committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Did Linda ask you?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Okay, let's move on from that discussion item to an action item. This is WASHA Colcarney's completion of employment probation period. And I don't know if WASHA is watching, but.
No, this is me.
It's just you.
This is me. She asked if she needed to be here, and I said, no, not really. Basically, this is a matter of procedure, as you may recall, in the employment, or I'm sorry, in the employee handbook, there is a 90-day probationary period. WASHA has satisfactorily completed that, and basically, in order to remove the probationary status, it needs formal board approval. And she has done a good job of implementing the assessment process and serving as the township's assessor. So I would ask that the motion be adopted or moved and seconded and be adopted to recognize her successful completion of that probationary period.
I'm moved.
Support.
So moved by Treasurer Palmer, support by Clerk Flintoff. Before we proceed, are there any other comments?
She's outstanding, we lucked out. She'll be giving a presentation at the next meeting. We're very lucky.
Yes, we are very lucky. Are there members of the public who have a comment?
Julian K. Julian.
There we go. Yes, I was, well, painted, oh, Kathy, no left. I'm the secretary of the roads advisory committee, and we, as we've said, we've only had a couple meetings regarding the Park Road SAD.
Julian, I'm sorry, this is a different topic on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I'm behind or in front. All right. Thank you.
It's okay, it's a little, it's a little confusing. It was a discussion item, so there was no public comment on the discussion item, but now we're on a different agenda item.
Okay, so you're having public comments before that. All right.
We're having public comment on WASHA Colcarney's completion of her employment probation period.
I'm sorry, yes, she's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caught you unaware, is that?
Sorry about the confusion. Are there any other public comments?
There are none.
All right. In that case, I believe we can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item J4, which is possible action on the resolution decreasing the responsibilities and requirements of the supervisor and accepting the supervisor's written consent to reduce the salary for supervisor. And before we take action on the resolution, I would like to make a brief statement. So the salary for the supervisor position has become a distraction, as I've said, from the important work of the township. I would like to remove the distraction. Accordingly, I am offering this resolution and letter of consent to reduce the supervisor's salary. My understanding is that this is the only means by which an elected official's salary can be lowered during their term of office. I am not planning to work less than full-time. I'll just be accepting lower pay, so it's a money-saving bargain for the township. One would think that this action to reduce my own salary would be met with grace by those who felt that my pay raise was somehow wrong. Surprisingly, I have encountered criticism and even opposition. Instead of working with me to facilitate this gesture toward peace, there are those who would prefer to continue making war. The obstacles being placed in the way of accomplishing this aren't really understandable, except when viewed through a political lens. By making it difficult for me to reduce my own salary, there are those who hope to score some type of political points to fuel other attacks, such as a lawsuit against the township and a recall campaign. I hope that tonight, we can put the partisan politics aside and proceed with this plan to resolve the conflict so we can turn to the real work of the township. I am replacing the longer letter of consent dated 1/21/22 with the following shorter letter. This is January 25th, 2022. To the Board of Trustees, from Will Hathaway, Supervisor, my consent to the proposed reduction in salary for supervisor. The salary for the position of supervisor has become a distraction. I propose to reduce the supervisor's salary to remove this distraction and allow the board to focus on the work we were elected to do for the township. I, Will Hathaway, the duly-elected supervisor of the Township of Sciow, Washtenaw County, Michigan, consent to the reduction of salary from $72,000 per year to $40,000 per year, effective December 1, 2021, to coincide with the start date of the Township Administrator, which will naturally result in a diminishment of the responsibilities of the office as described in the job duties of the Township Administrator adopted by the Township Board on August 17th, 2021. Accordingly, I will reimburse the township for the overpayment for December 2021 and January 2022 on mutually agreeable terms. I hereby provide my written consent to lower the supervisor's salary to $40,000 annually in support of the related resolution submitted for the board's approval on January 25th, 2022. Signed, Will Hathaway, Supervisor. In the resolution, I believe should be read too, Township of Sciow, Washtenaw County, Michigan Resolution, Resolution decreasing responsibilities and requirements of the supervisor and accepting the supervisor's written consent to reduce the salary for supervisor. I'll just read the whereas clauses. The following preamble and resolution are offered by, I guess, whoever's making the motion and whoever's supporting it. I, I, I will make the motion and support it by whoever supports it. Whereas Michigan law provides that the salary of an elected township official or an official appointed to fill a vacancy should not be decreased during the official's term of office unless the responsibilities and requirements of that office are diminished and the official consents in writing to the reduction in salary, MCL 41.952. And whereas Sciow Township hired a township administrator effective December 1, 2021, which resulted in a diminishment of the duties of the elected township supervisor. And whereas the township supervisor has consented in writing to a decrease in his salary from $72,000 to $40,000, Exhibit A. And whereas the Township Board wishes to decrease the salary of the Office of Township Supervisor, now therefore being resolved that, one, the Township Board finds that the responsibilities and requirements of the Office of Township Supervisor were diminished as of December 1, 2021; two, the Township Board accepts the township supervisor's written consent to decrease his compensation from $72,000 to $40,000; and three, in accordance with MCL 41.95, the salary of the Office of Township Supervisor is hereby decreased to $40,000 effectively, effective December 1, 2021. And four, any resolutions in conflict with this resolution are appealed to the extent necessary to give this resolution full force and effect. So I'll make that motion to approve or adopt that resolution. Is there a second? Second by Palmer. Is there discussion? Trustee Noel?
Okay.
Oh, and could you let in Mike Homier if he's out there somewhere? I'll give him access.
I have some serious concerns with this. Will and I have already talked. He knows what my concerns are. This board made an unlawful decision on August 17th when the resolution was passed to double the supervisor's salary. That is my opinion, and I know it's the opinion of some other people. The cleanest way to deal with this, in my opinion, is to rescind the August 17th resolution that doubled the supervisor's salary. I'd like to go through some of the facts here as I see them and just give my perspective on this. I believe the August 17th resolution doubling the salary was unlawful because Sciow Township had a Compensation Commission ordinance in effect at that time. Under this Compensation Commission ordinance, the salaries of all elected officials would be determined by the Compensation Commission. The action in our board item, board packet tonight is proposing a retroactive salary of $40,000 per year to December of 2021, which is inappropriate. The salary should be $36,000 per year. And this is because the August 17th doubling of the supervisor's salary from $36,000 to $72,000 was unlawful. And I feel that the supervisor is not entitled to a raise until the start of the new fiscal year in April of this year, 2022, as is consistent with the Compensation Commission requirements. Remember, Will's salary had been $36,000 per year. It was doubled on August 17th. He is still collecting the higher salary at this time. There's currently a lawsuit pending dealing with these issues. The Compensation Commission determined that the supervisor's salary should be $40,000 per year, and this will take effect in April of 2022. The board should not once again try to circumvent the provisions of the Compensation Commission. The court has yet to resolve the issues in the lawsuit. The August 17th Sciow resolution might be voided by the judge. We'll see what happens. We don't know at this time. So I guess my main message is, let's not make the same mistake again. I, I, I think it's inappropriate to do it this way at this time. Now, in our discussion today, Will said, well, let's talk to Mike Homier about it tonight. And I said, fine. I'm agreeable to that. And I had proposed the idea of rescinding the August 17th resolution. And so one of the questions we're gonna put to Mike tonight is, is that an option in this case? So I don't know if he's on, but.
Mike, are you, is Mike on, Teresa?
He is.
Can you elevate him a little?
He is.
Do you have some input from the public before Mike responds?
No.
You, you will have an opportunity to speak, and so will other members of the public, at some point before we vote.
Okay, but I think you're getting legal advice. There might be some point pertinent that the public has, that he may want to take into consideration before giving.
Abby, Abby, just, just have to wait just a few minutes.
Okay.
Mike, did you hear the question from Trustee Noel?
I did. And what I will first say is, as you know, I'm not involved in the litigation, so I'm not gonna comment on that. What I will say is that, you know, I understand Trustee Noel's position with respect to the August 17th resolution. There's been no determination, as I understand it, and as she has stated, that there has been anything unlawful done by the township. So one could argue that rescinding that August 17th resolution is indeed a reduction of salary under 41.95, which would otherwise be unlawful as well. And so I can't tell you whether or not that is or is not, only that right now, as it stands, the salary has been established at $72,000. It's been paid at $72,000 and pursuant to 41.95. The supervisor has the ability to consent in writing for a reduction in that salary, which he has done.
So if I could clarify, Mike, so if I understand, you're saying rescinding the 817 salary resolution may or may not be legal under 41.95?
What I'm saying is that currently, the salary for the Office of Supervisor is $72,000. Rescinding that resolution would result in a reduction of pay under 41.95. And if you were going to reduce that to $36,000, which is what I understood Trustee Noel to say, there has been no written consent to that figure.
Mike, what if there was written consent to go down to $36,000?
Well, certainly, that's within the purview of the supervisor, but that would comply with 41.95.
So then if he consented to it, we could do it, you're saying?
If he consented to a reduction of salary from 72 to 36, that is wholly within the authority under 41.95.
Okay, so we could rescind the ordinance then?
The resolution.
I'm sorry, the resolution. Yes.
Why would we have to?
Sorry.
So if he consents to it, if we wanted to, we could rescind the resolution?
After the consent is given?
Yes.
Yeah, I suspect that that would be possible.
Yeah.
And Kathy, what, what is in your mind when you suggest rescinding the, in, in that scenario? What's your interest in that?
I think that the resolution was unlawful because it was an attempt to circumvent the Compensation Commission ordinance that we had in effect.
I disagree, Kathy.
Okay, that's okay.
I think it happened, unfortunately, but I don't think there was any intent to be deliberate.
It happened, but.
I, I said it happened, but it is not intentional to circumvent.
May I ask a question of Kathy, not the nurse, but Kathy, the attorney? If that were rescinded, because I can't ask Mike this because he's not our litigation counsel, if it were rescinded, that, that is the main issue outstanding in the case.
I would caution all of you to not comment on the litigation. This is not the form.
I was going to.
Trustee Vogel?
I want to offer two observations on this. I, I do disagree, Kathy.
That's okay.
I, I do see it more like Treasurer Palmer. I want to offer two observations. I listen to you really hard. I've been tracking this. I've just listened to Mike. My sense, the supervisor's driving the bus on this one. What he consents to is pretty much gonna determine the outcome. If he consents to forty.
The outcome of what?
What the salary's gonna be. If he says, I'm good with forty, you know, he's good with forty. Let's make it happen. That's my first observation. I think he's driving the bus on this. Here's my second observation. This board has got fiduciary responsibility. And we've struggled to meet that. We don't get reports that provide any kind of overview of financial reporting. But it is a primary responsibility for us. I want us to recognize how many hours, primarily requested by the clerk, but how many hours have been spent on legal counsel on a range of issues? We spend an exorbitant amount of our residents' taxpayer money on township attorneys. We brought in a municipal expert to start to bring closure. All of the opposition, all of the pushback, all of the conflict that we have spent so many hours with Jim Fink trying to mediate, and we go to this attorney or to that attorney, that's real money, that this board needs to be responsible about spending. It's time to bring this issue to closure.
I want to respond.
What the supervisor consents to is, I think, what determines the day here. And I think we've got the municipal expert who can confirm a readiness to bring this to closure so we, the board, are being responsible about all the hours that, that, that we, and, and Jessica, when I saw an email from you to three or four attorneys asking for input from each one of them, it's excessive.
I'd be happy to give you a breakdown of where the.
It's excessive.
But I will say, Jane, I want to correct one point. The reason I brought that there is no budget for Mike Homier. We are over-budget on general legal services. Why that is, we can talk about, but it is mostly for the reasons that we've talked about. We have four new people on this board. We have a supervisor's requested a lot of help. But I, I will just disagree with you, Jane.
No.
It is not, I do not drive the attorney costs in, on this board.
Jane, I want to respond to something you said. You said that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents in the township, and I agree with that. From my perspective, Will has been overpaid. This $72,000 decision was not lawful. So when you look at responsibility to taxpayers and residents in the township, we have a responsibility to try to recoup some of that money. That's how I see it. And I, I know he's willing to do some, and I acknowledge that. And I acknowledged that when we talked today, and that's good. But I think, I really think it should go further. And that's why, I mean, that's why I think the salary should go back to $36,000 per year until April, and then it goes to forty. And I feel that the resolution should be rescinded or avoided. And then we have closure. It's a clean, it's the cleanest solution to the situation.
Are there comments from other members of the Board of Trustees who have not yet spoken? Are there comments from? Actually, people who haven't spoken yet. Did you have something that you wanted to say in addition to what you were saying?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, why don't you go ahead?
So I wanted to start out by, I mean, first of all, Will, I, I, it just, you know, I, I understand that you and Jane continue to not see me and understand what I'm about, just based on your preliminary statement about.
That's so broad. I don't know what to say.
About politics and, and things and.
Let's address the issue.
So let me address the issue. I want to thank Will for replacing his first letter of consent with this new one. It's much improved and helps us focus on the proposal. I agree with Jane. This is all about, this is Will's offer to the board, and the board can say up or down, whatever Will's offer is. So a small point, which I hope we can put in here, because I thought we had this agreement yesterday. because I thought we had this agreement yesterday when we sat with Thacker, who is our employment attorney, which is, to just make clear, even though this retroactivity to December 1st is a short period of time, relatively small amount of money, our township attorney advised the township that we have a simple agreement that he draft between the supervisor and the township to make clear. Because it crosses two calendar years, because it's a correction of overpayment, we would never address any overpayment with any other employee without a simple letter of understanding. And I think in this case, in particular with everything going on, I would like to suggest just adding a quick, maybe in resolve number four, that the township shall execute a written agreement with the supervisor to address any overpayments. Would that be amenable?
No, it's not necessary. It's addressed in the letter of consent.
I didn't see it addressed in the letter of consent in the way that the township attorney representing this board said that we should do.
We talked with Bill Thacker. There was no sort of agreement. I'm tired of this misrepresentation of discussions with attorneys.
What I want to say to this board, the township attorney for Syo Township recommended, he said he would write it, a brief, one-letter written agreement between the supervisor and the township for how to address those overpayments. When you're talking about taxes and everything else, I don't want any question about how we're going to do this. It's very simple, and it would, it seems like a no-brainer to me for this board to have a written agreement for that two-month period of time. Our township attorney has said we should do this.
Okay, are we ready to move on? We're not, that is not a friendly amendment.
Does anybody have any objection? Because as clerk, I mean, truly, Will, you know the conversations, David, Donna, Will. I don't want any murkiness about retroactivity.
No murkiness would be had.
There is because, first of all, the action has already been started, and it has to by the consent
Understood.
that the officer or board member gives.
Talking about the retroactivity.
So if he is giving back salary, paying back the overpayment, everything connected with payroll will be adjusted in the same act.
But it's, but there are a couple different ways it could be, and so it needs to be written down as what our township...
Are you planning to write it down right now?
No, I'm just...
So let's just settle this right now. We're not going to do this letter tonight. We're going to proceed with the resolution and the consent letter.
David, what is your recommendation?
Well, I'm not going to recommend something that has been discussed with the township attorney. I'm not, I'm not an attorney.
Why are you putting David on the spot? He was not part of this discussion.
I'm just asking for another...
You're just flailing around for another person to sort of unravel this.
No, 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 listen, Will, I'm not unraveling this. Honestly, I am uncomfortable with this because of prior conversations I won't go into about all the different ways that this could be sliced and diced. It's a small amount of money, we need to do it properly. We would ask for a written agreement with any employee. So that's all the provision would be, just that the township shall execute a written agreement with the supervisor to address any overpayments. I think I have that right, Mike. The overpayments is what that's typically called.
That's what I called it in the consent letter. Are there other comments from other trustees?
I would like to call the question on this. I think this is a matter that is ready for resolution. I think we need to move forward.
Well, before we call the question, we do need to allow for public comment because it is an action.
I have one more comment, I have a second point. Will, please don't mock me.
I'm not mocking you, I'm just impatient with this, but please go forward.
So, you know, Will, okay. So, look, the court's going to decide if what we did on August 17th was illegal or not.
This is not a place to talk about litigation.
What I am saying is, what we did on August 17th, though, was wrong. And I believe, I hear Jane and Donna, you're saying something different, but I believe we all knew what the right thing to do was, and we didn't do it. That is what I believe happened on August 17th.
I disagree.
And that's okay.
You are in the minority in this view.
And it was simple legislation. We discussed it in May. We adopted it in June. It was one page, there was nothing complex about it. And yet we went ahead and did this in public, and there it is. And I don't see any defensible explanation for it. So regardless of what the legality is, I believe that we erred and we screwed up. So I'm asking the board to start correcting the mistake tonight and to begin to make the township whole again. So any amount that we authorized, have authorized, over $36,000 is potentially unauthorized. So we're at $16,500 and climbing. And so I'm asking, Will, that if you would be willing to consent to $36,000 until April 1st, because April 1st, the Compensation Commission kicks in as a first act toward, you know, really putting this to bed. And that the board would commit to, you know, we'll continue to defend ourselves through this lawsuit and then take whatever steps we need to, to make this right. But I do think that it is $4,000 for four months. It is real money, but I think symbolically, it would go a long way to bring it back down to where it was authorized. So that's the bigger request.
Thank you.
The first one is a condition of being able to actually process the retroactivity, is to have some written agreement.
We heard the two conditions. Are there members of the public who would like to comment?
I'd like to comment.
Please come up to the table.
This ties in with the crux of what I told you about my encounters with Mr. Reed and Mrs. Stein. When they came to ask, I told him, "Have you seen the article which has come out in the January Observer, where he's saying..." Okay, let me backtrack. The only way that I know will have raised because I had a conflict with him before over the zippy auto wash, car wash, where the way it ended, I hanged the phone up on him. So I'm not here carrying his water. He can tell you, we didn't see things eye to eye. But the right is right, the wrong is wrong. So when I showed that to them, I said, "Well, so it's done, you won. Why can't you take a yes for answer?" The answer was, "We don't like him. We don't trust him." Okay, now, do you know why they want you to go back to the $36,000? They want to abolish and say that that vote was illegal. It fits neatly and tightly into what they have on this. You doubled your own salary behind the scenes with some other people. It is, they talk about the township being made whole. The man is saying he's going to work full-time, take part-time salary. There is a value in working full-time. He's not saying, "I'm going to go take $40,000, go part-time." He's saying, "I'm going to take $40,000 and still continue to work full-time because Syo deserves that." Not too long ago, if I would have told you on a story that a president is going to lose an election, he's going to file 67 lawsuits, he's going to lose all of them, then he's going to ask his supporters to attack the Congress of the United States, where they will put a jello in front looking for the vice president to hang. You would think, "I'm talking about a bad movie." They are using the recall petition. They are abusing it. Recall petition is what we would call in the federal level, high crimes and misdemeanor and the corrupting act. The so-called corrupting act, they talk about leveling the supervisor. He's saying, "I'm going to take $40,000, donate the rest back. I will continue to work for the residents of Syo Township", which actually has its own danger. What you are doing, he's financially able to do it. By diminishing these positions so much, you cannot get the talent which needs the money to support the families. You know what he's going to open it up to? To the people who want to take the position just through their own bidding. So if Syo Township is blessed with a lot of business and we have growth, why is it that the position of the supervisor, if everything is justified, and I don't want to make this personal, but when I saw the letter, everybody talks about, "Okay, we need a strong clerk position, a strong supervisor position", but no, 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 not the supervisor position. What we have to call, it's called branch of the government. The supervisor here is the executive. The rest of the township, you know, I'm sorry, trustees are the legislatures. And the township attorney is the judiciary. There is nothing which told you, if you want to do the right thing, you've got to wait for a court's decision because the legal process takes a long time. What they want, they want to use this stick over your head and keep whipping you with it. Because if you in fact put out this and reduce your own salary voluntarily and continue to work full-time, and I had my own conflicts with you before, but I'm doing the right thing here. It's not about a person, because tomorrow somebody else is going to sit in that seat.
Okay, Abby, three minutes are up. Thank you for your comment.
Well, you know, you guys have this huge discussion about these issues which affects the life of ours. I think for issues which are so pertinent, directly affecting the life of the Syo Township residents, there has to be a special provision made so we can have some extra time over the three minutes because these are once-in-a-lifetime situations. They are not an ordinary situation.
If you wait a little while, you'll have another turn to speak at the end of the meeting. There will be another opportunity. Are there members of the public who are participating remotely who would like to comment?
There are Jillian Kay followed by Steve King. Jillian? Jillian, are you still there?
Yeah, sorry, I was unmuted, then muted. Well, okay, so here's the authorities and responsibilities of Michigan Township officials, boards, and commissions. This is from the Michigan Township. Okay, so on page 30, this is in chapter 2, elected township officials. "In addition to statutory duties and responsibilities, the supervisor and other township board members are frequently delegated additional functions and duties by the township board. The township board members may be paid extra compensation for non-statutory duties provided the sum is established before the duty is performed." This is MCL 41.96 and from the Michigan Constitution, Article 11, Section 3. So Supervisor Hathaway was elected in at half, part-time for $36,000. He created a list of duties. Some of them he claims were statutory, some of them, under that guise, was not. And then there was a long list of other things that are not statutory duties. So he has claimed he's been working 50 to 60 hours a week, and I believe that. So based on the Michigan Constitution, since it says neither the legislature nor any political subdivision of this state shall grant or authorize extra compensation to any public officer, agent, or contractor after the service has been rendered or the contract entered into. So Supervisor Hathaway, you went above and beyond your statutory duties before compensation was approved by the board. So you are at $36,000 for part-time. The Compensation Commission was established, and they decided $40,000, which is a pay raise for this part-time job. Now, according to the compensation to township officers, 41.95, it states, "The commission shall determine the salary of each member of the township board, which shall be effective at the beginning of the next fiscal year." So your $40,000 begins at, I believe, April 1st. So there is no giving back something that you didn't have in the first place. You can't donate something you didn't have in the first place. Now, according to this, this book, it was written by an attorney and from the Michigan Township Association. So why would they say that in this book if it wasn't true? Consider your part-time at $36,000. Thank you.
What's up next, hearing?
Steve King followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Steve?
Yes, thank you. I will echo the sentiments of the previous speaker because when the current supervisor chose to run for office, the, it was very simple, the salary was $36,000. Because the fact that the township was out without an administrator, there was a stipend put up for the previous supervisor to do more work. Now we have an administrator. So why would we continue to give a stipend, a temporary stipend, and make it a permanent position and salary to take it from 36 to 72, and now we're going to revert to $40,000? These are all, it's a shadow game, very simply. It's all about power, it's all about making more money. Simply, it's a $36,000 part-time position, which every single supervisor before this has gone to. It's your choice in a part-time position to work more money. It's not the choice of the constituents to pay you to do more just because you say you do it and without any physical proof of 56 hours. I would love to see the physical proof that those hours were worked and you've earned them. It's a $36,000 job. You want $72,000 and you want to usurp responsibilities from other members of the board or others that are in this meeting? It's very simple. You are taking power away from other people that you want to take for yourself. You earned $36,000 by getting elected. Deal with it. Thank you for my comment.
Thank you. Jonathan Greenberg followed by Harvey Summers. Jonathan?
Hi, thank you. Like to draw a parallel between two moments in the meeting this evening. Early on, I listened to Jane do her normal pearl clutching around being called a name from last week. How we need to be nice to each other, we need to be more kumbaya and all that stuff. That's great, I agree. But then let's fast forward just a few minutes later where she took a conversation, took a sharp left turn only to slam it incorrectly into the clerk. Why would you take that discussion and turn it into an issue about legal expenses? And for anyone who's paying attention, we know where those legal expenses have been coming from. They've been coming from the supervisor needing to get advice in all sorts of arenas he should have been knowledgeable in and from all sorts of lawyers we shouldn't have needed because of the actions that he's taken. But Jane, I call it back to your behavior. You can't have it both ways. You can't run and resign. You can't be offended at the way people are treating you and then treat other people the way that you treated the clerk. How much time do I have left?
You still are under the three minutes.
All right, thanks, have a good one.
Harvey Summers, Harvey?
Harvey Summers, 2129 Autumn Hill Drive, Still. I see a couple of facts here. The first fact is that the supervisor was elected at a salary of $36,000. I see a confusion that on August 17th, that salary was raised. The resolution may or may not have been legal. But the second fact that I see is that the Compensation Commission has now determined that the supervisor's salary should be set at $40,000 as of April 1st, 2022. So I'm confused why the supervisor's letter of January 21st makes the offer to reduce the salary to $40,000 at this point, when that salary level does not start until April 1st. Why not resolve this situation by offering to reduce your salary to $36,000 until April 1st, and it would be resolved? Thank you.
We have no more comments.
In that case, Trustee Vogel, you had called the question?
I guess I did.
Is there a second?
All support.
Support from Jerome. Please call a roll.
Sorry. Just so I'm clear, we're calling the roll and calling the question?
We're calling the roll and calling the question.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
I want clarification. What am I voting on?
So Jane, Jane called the question, but we still needed to have time for public comment?
Okay, but my understanding of calling the question would be to call the motion on the table.
Right.
Which is...
The resolution has been moved. I think you... The resolution is, has been moved. I think you, you seconded it. I moved it.
Yeah, Hathaway and Palmer.
Right. Okay, but that's calling the question, so we're voting on the motion?
We're voting on calling the question, which will then allow us to go forward with voting on the resolution.
I never heard of that before.
Yes.
I'd actually like to pause my request for a moment because I'd like to get some input from Mike.
Mike, all right.
David got out of the line of fire. I was really sorry. So, so I guess I'm looking for a perspective, Mike, on this issue of thirty-six versus forty. It, it does seem compelling to me that the forty from the Compensation Commission doesn't go into effect until April, I understand. So, so is this war appropriate to, to go ahead and, and recommend the thirty-six thousand versus the forty? Since the commission's recommendation isn't in effect until April first? I, I would just value a perspective on that.
Well, you know, I suppose my perspective revolves around the consent, right? So it's not my job to give that consent or to withhold that consent. That's the supervisor's position. He has the ability to consent to a reduction in salary, whatever that number is, thirty-six or forty. You're correct that the forty thousand would take effect then with the next fiscal year, which will begin April first.
Can I clarify though, Jane, the forty thousand recommendation determination from the Compensation Commission cannot take effect unless I consent to it. So if I, if we don't take any action tonight, say we didn't do this, we didn't adopt this resolution in my letter of consent, the salary approved in August would stay in effect, so it would remain seventy-two thousand. And when we got to April first, it would stay in effect at seventy-two thousand unless something else happens. So it's possible that, you know, there will be some, you know, judgment and there will be some other action. That's possible. But there's no way, other than what I've put on the table before the board tonight, to reduce the salary for the supervisor without doing this.
So, well, why is the effective date then December first instead of April first? Did you, did you consider providing consent tonight for, for a future date?
No, because it's key to the start date for the township administrator. The basis for doing this is the change in duties and it's key to that timing and to, you know, set some artificial date in the future, which, you know, and, and say, oh, that's when the change in duties will occur or that's when it should take effect, is, is sort of divorcing the, the the basis of, of the duties from the, the action. So trustee Jerome, I saw your email.
I just would like to, I think we've exhausted this topic. I think everyone's had an opportunity to present their...
Okay, let's proceed with calling, calling the roll and calling the question. We wouldn't need to do that. You could just actually call.
It sounds like we're ready to move forward.
Oh, can we dispense with calling the question? All right, then let's proceed, let's proceed with the vote on the, the main motion, which is to approve the resolution.
All right, I just want to be clear so that trustee Vogel then is withdrawing her motion to call the question and whoever supported that is withdrawing their support.
Yeah. Vogel and Jerome, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for helping us to keep things on, on track here. So with the motion...
Resolution offered by Hathaway, supported by Palmer for the resolution as presented in the packet, as well as the one you sent, it's the same, with, with the letter of consent emailed out today, the one dated January twenty-fifth, 2022.
Correct. The, the two items that I read at the beginning. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes four to two. Resolution adopted.
That brings us to J five. Thanks, Mike.
Keep him on.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to stay.
Well, I, I will leave that up to you. Would you like me to stay or can I go? I, it's either, I'm fine with either.
I don't know that there's any other items on the agenda that will require the presence of the township attorney.
No.
So I, I would say that you are, you are thanked and excused at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
So this, this is another matter for Matt from OHM. Terry, oh, you got him. I turned away for a second and there you are. So this is the force main maintenance and air release valve, ARV replacement project. Matt, can you educate us?
Yeah, so this is an extension of a study that we've been doing, but through the study that we've been doing for the utilities department on the Jackson Road Force Main, we realized that one of the air release valves located approximately around the Parkland Plaza, Jackson Road area was in really bad shape. The utilities department has been monitoring this and decided last summer that it was time to act. And so we worked with them to put together a set of plans. On top of this replacement of this valve, we thought it would be a good opportunity to get a camera up into the force main to look at the condition. This is a high point within the force main. For those that are listening, there's a pump station located at Zeb Road and Jackson, located next to the Weingards Building. It basically accepts all the sanitary sewer within the Jackson Road District, pumps it all the way to Ann Arbor, approximately across the street from Knight's Steakhouse there and then into the San, Ann Arbor system. As part of the study, we were assessing the condition of the force main and this came up. So we were authorized by the township board to design the air release valve replacement. Also, there's an area off of, I believe, Valley Drive in, in Ann Arbor where we would also add an existing, or add a manhole and an air intake to help with hydrogen sulfite corrosion within the pipe. And I'm getting into the weeds a little bit. Needless to say, we put a project out to bid, just like Zeb Road that I presented on earlier. Instead of seven bidders that we got on Zeb Road, we got zero bidders on this one. So this is, this is a project that is important. It's very niche work. It's very difficult work. We do have a couple interested contractors, but the timing of the bids did not necessarily work with their timing. So our recommendation and sitting down with the utilities department is twofold. And our letter outlines those two recommendations. One, this is important work and approximately a hundred thousand dollars of the work is specialty valve and equipment that has long lead times, about twelve weeks. Our recommendation would be to allow the utilities department to purchase those items so we could get those at least in the works and ordered. And then in the meantime, their, OHM can reach out and get one, maybe possibly even two quotes from the two contractors that wrote us back and said they're not interested in submitting a bid based on the timing. But to get quotes from them and evaluate their schedules and then come back to the board at a later date for, or with a recommendation, assuming that the prices they submit are within reason. The other option instead, for the second bullet point, and I guess is open for discussion, is we can put it back out in the street for open bid again. But being that we already did that and we had it out for bid for a good three-week, four-week period back in December and January, our recommendation would be to approach the two contractors that showed interest and see what they can come up with and come back to the board.
Are there comments from members or questions from members of the board? Trustee Jerome?
Yeah, Matt, how many people did you solicit for the bids?
It was a public open bid, so it was advertised publicly. It went out mitten and Mida and...
And both of the two people that got back to you with you had timing concerns, not, not scope of work concerns?
Yeah, well, they, they basically said it would, if it would have fit better within their schedule. And I mean, this is, we are considering this emergency type work. So we basically said they, they could start in April and we wanted it wrapped up between April and I think the timeline we allowed was twelve weeks after that. So we were looking for an April, May, June construct. I think there's contractors that might be interested if we allowed a larger timeframe. But the utility department really wants, doesn't really want to wait too much longer. This thing is looking to let go and if it does, it's an expensive, expensive ordeal, so.
And I appreciate the approach. I think obviously essentially, and I think obviously most contractors, if they're well qualified at this point in time, they're already booked for April, as you well know. So their first jobs are on their books already. And this would be buying the materials. Traditionally, I, I have some apprehension with buying materials and having other installs because then they don't warranty the product. They say that I'm not responsible if it fails. I think these are simple enough components of a, of a total system that I wouldn't have that concern. So, and I would think actually in this instance, are we getting these at, are we buying these directly so we don't have to go with the markup through the third-party contractors as well?
Yeah, you would actually probably save fifteen percent on these items. And I attached the quotes from HESCO and Kennedy Industries, I believe is the second one. And those are standard vendors that Steve already works with and buys things from when needed. I mean, you guys work with Kennedy all the time on, on different...
They're all throughout Southeast Michigan, so absolutely. So yeah, so we're actually saving the markup on that and that sense of buying the materials directly.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Other members of the board? Are there comments from, oh, I'm sorry.
Just that I am familiar with the process. I was there when the bids were open. They did not get any. This was some very, very unusual. And this, this project is, is needed. This, this, this project is needed. I have heard that from multiple sources and so I would ask seriously for the board's consideration on this.
Right.
Are there members of the public or...
We have one hand up. Steve King. Steve?
Oh, I'm sorry. I clicked it by mistake. My apologies.
So no, no members of the public waiting to speak? Thanks, Terry. In that case, is there someone ready to make the model motion?
Someone.
Moved by trustee Jerome, second by trustee Vogel. The motion is to authorize the utilities department to purchase the long lead time equipment for the ARV replacement project in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars and to authorize OHM and the utilities department to work with qualified contractors to submit a quote for work to be performed to complete the repair efforts. OHM will provide the BOT with at least one qualified quote in its engineer's cost estimate in February 2022. Please, well, actually, we can just do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So the motion carries?
Okay, thank you. We'll get right on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for hanging with us. So that brings us to suburban Lithia PUD rezoning and preliminary site plan, OA number two-one-zero-zero-six, PSP number two-one-zero-one-three, multiple parcels. And I think we have Doug Luan hopefully still with us.
We should have brought this one forward too.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking when you were moving things. I was thinking, well, we could flip the whole thing and then...
We should have done that. We just have to do that in general. It's so hard to ask these guys to be on, on hold for so long.
It's part of the nature of the beast. Is Doug still with us?
He appears to be.
And there may be somebody else from the developer, and I'm not sure Doug may be able to identify who that is.
Yes, hello everybody. Can you, can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Doug. Who's, is there someone here from the developer who should also be brought forward?
Yeah, Jeff Hutah and Jason, maybe Jason Longhurst, but definitely Jeff Hutah. H-U-T-A-H from Nowack and Fraus.
So we're elevating those to panelists?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you said Jason?
I don't know if Jason's there, but maybe Jason Longhurst?
I'm not seeing that.
It'll, it'll just be me, Doug.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So it's Hutah and Luan, if you could sort of elevate them to panelists?
They are elevated to panelists.
You just haven't turned on their camera.
Oh, I see. All right.
You can't make somebody turn on their camera. There they are. I guess you can.
Hi, guys. So...
Hello.
Yeah, Jeff, happy new year. Would you like to start off presenting?
Certainly. Thank you again for the opportunity to be with you tonight. I know it's a long night, so we'll keep our presentation short. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if that's okay with everybody.
No, he doesn't. He's hiding.
Okay, so hopefully you can see the screen. It should say... No? Okay, great.
There it is.
Okay, so this has been a project that's been in the making for quite some time. There is a, a long history and, and story associated with that. I don't want to go into all those details unless you guys have questions regarding that. We're dealing with roughly an eighteen-acre property on Jackson Road. This is the, the property in question. Most of the structures have already been razed as a part of pre-development and just removing blight and other related issues associated with that. This is the proposed site plan. The proposal right now is for a new Mercedes dealership, a Jaguar Land Rover dealership and a BMW dealership to be constructed on the overall property. It's being proposed as a PUD, under your PUD ordinance. This is a mixed-use development. We are proposing as a part of the, or what was approved as a part of the planning commission approval was the future development of an outlot here. During the earlier phases of development, the, the developer tried to market this property as, to, to attract a mixed-use component to the site. That was, proved to be difficult. They, they marketed that property for approximately two years. And in our case, we felt it was very important to maintain that mixed-use. That was a requirement of the ordinance. But what we are doing is reserving that as a future development option for the overall project. Another key feature that we'll talk about is the community benefit piece, which is really highlighted here in the center, which is called EV Park. And then in addition to that, we've got a very substantial stormwater management strategy for this project where we're introducing bioswales, bio-retention areas, permeable pavers, created wetlands, things that we're really trying to really focus on a sustainable project as a whole. This is a, some precedent images of the Jackson Road corridor. We are generally adhering to all of the requirements of the Jackson Road overlay district as far as landscaping and other elements. In this particular area, what you're seeing are bioswales, bio-retention areas. We're actually bringing sidewalks into the development, creating interest along that Jackson Road corridor as an overall part of the development. And you can kind of see these precedent images along the bottom side of the, of the image is, is what we're trying to create in that area. Really taking what's going on in that Jackson Road corridor, we recognize... We recognize especially this area of Jackson Road is very tired. That was something that was acknowledged by the planning commission when they took their vote to approve this, move it forward to you. So this plan has over 35% open space. The, the PUD ordinance requires 30% open space, so we're, we're far exceeding that. This project is promoting electrification and non-motorized transportation within the region. We have that well-developed stormwater managed strategy with bioswales, wetlands, and permeable pavement. We are, have an enhanced, energy efficient building envelopes as a part of the overall project. Dark skies compliant exterior lighting. We have an enhanced landscaping for visual screen and overall environmental benefit. And one of the things that the planning commission passed us with was providing a commitment towards a zero carbon footprint for the project. So we're looking forward to the next phase of this, which will be a design charrette with key members of the planning commission, probably representative from the township board to review that zero carbon footprint element of the project. So this is the major community benefit to the project. This is what's called EV Park. The, the overall purpose of EV Park is to help reduce range anxiety, which is a, an actual element as it relates to electrification of vehicles. This is being a prime location on the I-94 corridor. The vision for this is that we have travelers who are traveling up through I-94 corridor will be able to stop, grab their lunch, and then be able to come to EV Park and plug in and charge their vehicles of, as a stop between where they might be going, whether that's between Ann Arbor, Detroit, and, you know, the west side of the state. We recognize that there is a need within the community for charging stations. We also have other unique elements with respect to how the charging stations are going to be presented. We've got solar arrays for picnic tables to provide for educational opportunities and charging of cell phones, things of that nature, interesting benches. So really a high-tech kind of a park that kind of melds with the vision that we have for the three auto dealerships. So we are providing as a part of the community benefits, six level three charging stations. Those are these fast charging stations. They can charge a vehicle from zero charge to 80% charge in approximately 30 minutes. So you can kind of get the, the, how that process would unfold. We have the ability to expand the number of charging stations based on public need and demand and infrastructure capabilities. And then we talked about the smart amenities as far as tables, benches, and things of that nature. And then our naturalized stormwater management strategy. And then that desire to minimize range anxiety. So this is a blow up of the BMW dealership and the proximity to the future outlot. The future outlot component of this, we feel is a win-win for the township in that the PUD agreement will place restrictions on what can be developed at that location. And if the, the outlot is going to be developed in the future, it will be, have to be through a PUD amendment. So the township planning commission, township board retain total control over the future development of the outlot. This outlot, future outlot development really was a genesis of meetings that we had, pre-application meetings at the township level. And the township has had success with other outlot developments that were developed after the main development that was installed. So that's that process there. And then we're just going to go through a couple of precedent images. This is a really a boutique type dealership environment, all of them being high-end developments with the Mercedes, Jag Land Rover, and the BMW dealerships. And here's the precedent image on the Jaguar Land Rover. You see EV Park flanking that, some precedent images on that, what that is, the vision for that area. This is the Mercedes-Benz and also EV Park being shown. Very well landscaped, very high-end finishes on everything being proposed. Just a precedent image of EV Park. And then we've got Mercedes-Benz. This beautiful architecture associated with this. Jag Land Rover. And then the BMW site. Well, these are all being required as a part of the, 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 the various dealerships. They require enhancements. One of the things that we had noticed or noted at the planning commission level is that the existing dealership locations are not sufficient to support the future demands. Those dealerships were built 28 years ago, 29 years ago. And the, the size of this property in support of this is roughly creates additional 66% area, which is really based on the growth that was identified within the overall community and the region and the demand that is out there by the residents for, for this. So I think the only other thing that we would say is that, you know, one of the things that we really feel that this project is going to serve, it'll be a catalyst for the corridor to hopefully spur on additional redevelopment, some facade improvements, anything else that might help improve that corridor. So I think those were the points and those were the issues that resonated with the planning commission when they approved the project. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Doug, do you want to add anything in terms of the planning commission?
Just a, a couple of things. On the agenda tonight, it indicates preliminary PUD, and I think it says rezoning. We're not at the rezoning stage quite yet. So all the township board is being asked to do at this point is to review and make a decision on the preliminary PUD. The rezoning for a PUD doesn't actually occur until the final stage of review. So right now, this is just the preliminary stage. And for those watching at home or in the audience, this is, the preliminary PUD is set up for the township to determine if a project meets the PUD criteria, the PUD design standards, township master plan. Many of the, of the, of the specific site plan details will be brought forth to the planning commission at the, in a final PUD stage, and then back to the township board for final approval. And at that point, the project would be rezoned to a PUD. PUD is a zoning, it's a zoning to a specific plan. So if this plan was actually approved ultimately in the final, as a final PUD, then the only thing that could happen on this property is the plan that the applicant just showed you. Any deviation from that plan would have to go back in front of the planning commission and ultimately the township board for an amendment to the PUD. So this is truly a, a rezoning to a very specific plan. And that's what ultimately, when we get to the final stage, that's what the township board will be asked to approve at that point. But this is just the preliminary stage. What this allows, what a preliminary PUD approval allows is for an applicant to move on to the final stage. It doesn't grant them zoning, it doesn't allow them to put a shovel on the ground. As it does is basically it says, yes, CIO Township believes this meets the PUD criteria, the PUD design standards meets the master plan. We like the concept and the, the real specific details will be worked out at the final stage. The planning commission did recommend approval. They recommended approval of the preliminary PUD at their December, I believe, December 20, 28th meeting?
20th.
The 20th meeting?
Yeah.
So they, they recommended approval at their December 20th meeting, believing that the project did in fact meet the PUD criteria, did in fact meet the PUD design standards with several conditions. You can see that on page two and three of our memo to the township board. The conditions were, the conditions noted in our detailed review letter, which, most of which were detailed site plan issues. The same with the township engineers letter. And then trying to maximize stormwater capacity of the outlot to, to allow that to be contained within the existing development as well. With the understanding that those items would be addressed at the final PUD stage. So with the planning commission's recommendation and with our review of the site plan, you know, we're in a position to recommend to the township board that, that you would approve the preliminary PUD to allow the township to move on to the final, final stage of this process. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustee Jerome, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, we don't have, unless I'm mistaken, I don't have any of those materials. I have planning commission minutes, which don't, which no issues noted by Kyler Wortman, but I don't have the letter that notes the issues noted. In other words, that's not part of the packet and I don't have anything with regards to.
You don't have the memo from them?
Yes, the memo says, there's, applicant is proposing three dealerships. It does not include the background that's provided at the planning commission meetings that is actually the summary of the PUD conditions that are being met. There's more than just one PUD condition that has to be met for conditional PUD. And so I don't have any of that breakdown. Doug, could you maybe help? Because public benefit is only one facet of that. And I see that we obviously have an energy park. Could you expand, expound upon that a little bit so that I have a better idea about the other criterias that were identified in your communication to the PC, which we, I, I, I don't have, maybe I'm incorrect and.
No, you're fine.
No, you're not.
It's just a memo that, that transfers this.
This just says that they, they approved it. I don't, I want, I don't see the basis for why they're approving it.
Right. Doug, do you, are you able to share that?
I, I, no, I'm not able to share. I've got a copy of my report here from December 6.
Could you highlight the criteria that were met?
Yeah.
With regards to the PUD, the application for a PUD to meet that criteria?
Yeah, there's, so the first part that I mentioned was the project eligibility for a PUD. And there, there are seven, seven items that the applicant is supposed to meet. And I'll, I'll go through those, I'll go through those as quickly as I can here. The first is that the PUD district is, one is intended to provide permit flexibility and regulation of land development, encourage innovation and land use and variety in design, layout and type of structures, constructed, achieve economy and efficiency and the use of land, natural resources, energy, and the provision of public services, encourage useful open space and provide better housing, employment, and shopping opportunities particularly suited to the needs of the residents. So our comment on this was, the applicant's narrative states that the cluster of three car dealerships will provide shared facilities within the overall development, including efficient stacked parking spaces for car inventory among other elements. Additionally, this is from the applicant, they indicate, "Our plan includes varying setbacks for better building placement, pedestrian circulation connectivity, a community benefit through the development of a park, increased visual screening of the inventory parking lot through extensive landscaping and enhanced stormwater management throughout the development and specifically along the Jackson Road frontage." "We also note the site maintains 35% or greater open space and has a planned pocket park as described by the applicant. Provides areas of permeable paving and bioswales for additional water infiltration and free electric vehicle charging stations." So that was how we believed that first criteria was addressed. The second criteria for a PUD indicates a PUD must result in one of, one or more of the following. The one, the first one is the one everyone kind of recognizes with a PUD. And that is a recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and to the community where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without application of the PUD regulations. The second is protection and preservation of natural resources and natural features of a quantity and or quality that can be clearly demonstrated where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without application of PUD. And then the third one in this section is a non-conforming use shall be deemed, will, will be eliminated. Well, that, that's not, there's, since they tore all the buildings down on site, there's no non-conformity, this is just a vacant piece of property, so that one does not apply. Our comment here is the most obvious recognizable benefit to the ultimate users of the project and the community is the preservation of open space. The project, and this isn't from our report, but this is just from my recollection. The applicant might be able to fill in some spaces, or fill in some blanks I'm not saying. But the applicant has, did make some changes to this plan that, that did significantly add or increase some of the open spaces on the project that weren't part of the initial, you know, the initial plans that we sought for this. So we had indicate that was one of the benefits. Enhanced landscaping containing buffer and preserved trees in addition to a naturalized stormwater management system, wetland creation, and things associated with that. As stated, the previous planning, planning commission, this will be the township board will need to affirm the proposed development meets one or more of the PUD eligible criteria. And finally, they are commensurate with a number and size of some of the requested deviations for the project. So we mentioned some of the things that the applicant is proposing. And we mentioned that the planning commission has to find that it meets those criteria. The planning commission discussed this, they believed it did meet this criteria. One of the things that I didn't mention in my report that I was reading from that I think the planning commission talked a lot about was that car charging park in the center of the project. And they believe that was something that we wouldn't normally get for a dealership. And so that was something that was kind of above and beyond what we would kind of normally get. So the planning commission did discuss this. They believed it met that criteria, obviously because they recommended to approve the project. This third criteria.
Before we read each one of them, and maybe it's just because I'm used to, obviously, I actually was part of the planning commission when this first came to us. But maybe we don't, maybe I'll ask some more specific questions. And obviously, if the planning commission has approved it and it meets the criteria of PUD, that you, you couldn't bring it forth if it didn't meet that criteria. So maybe it'd be better for us to concentrate on specific questions related to the, and we can go back to it if other people want to. But I appreciate you covering the, that incorporates quite a bit of the issues in terms of the benefit. Can I ask a couple of specific questions of, in relation? So my, my, I have a couple thoughts and concerns. So I'm understanding that the outbuilding lot would be under a separate PUD, a separate amendment to this original PUD, so we would have complete control of that space? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, if they did, yeah, if they did anything, when that would, when and if, you know, a, a use would come to that site, they would have to go back through either a full amendment to the PUD or a site plan.
Okay, because there is a, there is a water source that runs through that as well as quite a bit of woods for carbon sequestration. So I just would want to make sure that we would have control of whatever would be proposed for that space so that we are maximizing that. And that's, that's the way we're understanding that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I concur.
Alec, before we move on from that, I actually have a related question. What's the time? What's the timing for the, the development of that, I guess you're calling it an outlot? What's, what's the plan for that? When, when does that occur?
Well, right now, again, we, if you recall the history on this, is, it's, you know, this was one of the things that was hanging up the project moving forward in the past was the prior township board wanted to see, you know, what was going to be there. And right now, because we had, we had marketed that property for two years with no, no takers, you know, we marketed it as hotel, we marketed it as residential, we marketed it as commercial. There just wasn't anybody that was willing to come into that spot. So there is no specific time horizon. But what we felt was really the win-win here is the ability for the township to maintain control over that by being in the PUD and really defining what it is that we, we, we all agree would want to be on that property. You know, our thought is, you know, it might be a sandwich shop, it might be a little coffee shop, something along those lines. But we just don't know, and we don't have a time horizon. But again, resting on what has successfully been done in the township in the past, and maybe Doug can kind of highlight that a little bit better than I can with the history and other developments, that there's been success where the major development has gone on, and then these smaller outlets do eventually get developed based, and it's just driven based on the market conditions and, and what's going on. You know, the worst thing that happens here is that nothing ever gets developed there, and it remains treed, open space, you know? That's, that's the worst aspect or the, the worst concern that I think the township would have. And that's why we felt that that was a win-win for the township. You know, you, you made control over it, and then you also have the ability to, if, if a suitable development doesn't come along for that property, then it remains open space.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Jerome.
Couple more questions. Can you explain the parking lot behind the credit union? There's a little, I'll call it an outlot. I don't know what you would call it. It was in your diagram. It was to the far east of your site.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and share my screen again. You're referencing this property over here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's property that the developer has acquired. It is needed for parking, for whether it's going to be inventory. I believe that the site plan calls it for inventory. And we've, we've done the double stacking and parking in the rear.
And that's all sufficiently screened, so that's not visible? I, I don't want to have, I don't want to be going down Jackson Road and looking at... I understand you need to have inventory for, for dealerships. I, I get that. But what I don't want is a secondary, I'll call, I'll call this a mini sweepster, like we have at the sweepster plant, where I have storage of vehicles that I am looking at constantly. So I'm, I would like to see that all of that landscaping is sufficient so that it is thoroughly screened and not looking like a, it, it's, because it looks like a separate component to the actual dealerships themselves. I understand the cars to support that, but I just want to make sure that that's, it looks well screened, but I would want to reiterate that as a, as a, as a request, I guess I would say.
Yeah.
Certainly.
So I was going to say, certainly for a final PUD approval, we will have the details that demonstrate adequate screening there.
Yeah, and just one other comment, and I love the commitment to the zero carbon. I, I look forward to, to the opportunity to come up with maybe alternative building materials and methodology. That's great. I would, and I do like the EV charging park. I do want to make sure that, you know, as I look at it, there's, you know, a small entrance to that. I just want to make sure that that's a township park amenity that's serving the residents of the township and not a dealership park amenity. So I want to make sure that it's inviting enough off of Jackson Road that it's clear that this is an opportunity for anybody in Jack. I, and I absolutely agree one hundred percent, and we're actually dealing in another area dealing with the issues with rapid charging and the opportunities to, to, to stop along a longer journey, you know? Slow chargers are no longer relevant because you have a three-hundred-mile travel radius. So those are out. Now that's all the rapid chargers. So I like all that. I just would want to make sure that that connectivity to the park is intuitive so that I wouldn't take anybody, have to figure that out. So I'd like to, you know, in the next phase, understand signage and access to that so that it is truly a township park rather, as I say, than a site amenity. And I know that's not your intention. I'm just pointing that out. That's one of the concerns I would have.
No, no, we appreciate that. And I think one of the things that we didn't highlight in the presentation, just trying to keep it brief, is that Lithia Automotive has a, an, an app that is going to be in, in development or close to being launched where this will be on somebody's cell phone. They'll be able to dial up and look, you know, where can I find an EV station? And it's going to be able to direct them right to this location. So that, and that's where all the technology is going. So intuitively, it's going to go there. There's no question about that. But we, we understand the point, and that will be addressed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other comments? Other members of the board? Before we vote, I, we don't allow members of the public to comment. Are there members of the public? Is that theory?
We do have Steve King. Steve?
Hi, again. I, I really have some interest in the, the repurposing of the current dealerships which are across the road. What is the plan for those? Because we have two new dealerships. There's not a Land Rover, there's not a Jaguar there currently. The new areas that are across there near the credit union, this is all new area where homeownership has been turned down. What happens to the dealerships across the road when they're emptied? Is there a plan that those will be cleaned up? They won't be blight? They won't be bare concrete, left bare for, you know, again, it's going to be ugly for that. And then my other point is, is having a little bit of intuition on this one is that the, the usership of EVs, the greater portion of this within all southeastern Michigan is between the I-275 and I-696 corridor, and we're outside of that quite a bit. So when we're all selling this about, hey, we can charge up EVs, has anybody looked into the usership of the Tesla charging stations on the Annabrisaleen Meyer stations? Because every time I've been there, there's never been one car plugged into those. So while we sell this, hey, we have EV charging stations. How is that going to be used? Is it possible that they won't be used, and this is going to be, again, another boondoggle? Because I see it completely as that. This is a, a destination to nowhere. You're going to have more car dealerships on one side, which is going to be new. On the other side, which is the north side, are all going to be unused because nobody's going to move in there. And then we have more blight. Because, you know, Sioux Township, you know, the worst thing that could happen is that nothing happens to this land. It stays a green area. That's the best thing that could happen. That's why people move to southeastern Michigan, Jeff. That's why people move into Sioux Township. This is a more agrarian area. It's green, it's trees, and the worst thing that happened is we have quiet. I'd like you to think about that. Thank you.
Other members of the public?
There was, but...
Thank you, Steve. No, we are all done.
No, I have a comment.
Oh, please, consider it in advance.
Um, so, since I've been in real estate for more than twenty years, PUD planning and development, you can set the terms upfront. Often, the businesses will come back, when there's their wish list and they know they can get all of it. They put it in there, and later on, they will argue about it. I think if you take a look at, it looks beautiful, beautiful facility, no question. But the last gentleman has a good point. They own certain dealerships. Are we going to have a commitment that they are going to rehab the ones that they own? Two of them they rent, they own the, I believe the one behind the BMW is owned by them. So when everybody moves here, what happens to that dealership? Can we have a commitment that it won't become a blight? Number two, if you look at from the air, right now, how much green there is? I think all the three dealerships are beautiful, but that future development needs to stay green as of right now. We don't need to cut down all the rest of the trees on the side for some future lot. To offset, you're going to have a lot of open space, but hard concrete, where the water doesn't absorb as easily. You have to have retention ponds and all of that. There is three huge dealerships which we really do need. I mean, I admit it from a business point of view because I'm a, a small business owner, but I think the development of businesses needs to be environmentally friendly also. I say if you want to give it, I give them everything, but that future component needs to stay green. I'm talking about that lot on the side, which is going to be a sandwich shop. It will end up being another lot. Because as business picks up, as there is a need for more inventory, the sandwich shop is going to go away, or the sandwich shop will be up front, and the rest is going to be cars parked. So in order to offset the footprint, even though it's carbon neutral and all that we want to do and stuff like that, I believe that we need to keep that one portion green permanently as a condition. I know that it says that it can be controlled in future, but you open the door. Do it upfront. Say this is our condition for PUD. We want that green space to stay green, undeveloped green, to offset this huge piece that we are giving you, which literally, I mean, it looks nice, but the, as a business for a car dealership, you have a lot less trees than you have pavements. That's the nature of the beast. You have to. So that sparseness of landscaping in the other areas, because it's a car dealership which requires a lot of pavement, can get environmentally offset by that green space. I do know that a lot of people complain about Ann Arbor is stuffed with a green belt and on and on and on. But look, we can become like West Bromfield. We can become a concrete slump. Where my sister lives, that they cut every tree down on the main streets. You drive down and all you see is concrete, lot after concrete, business after business, and everything is gone unless you go to the secondaries and the, at the back. And it is true, we moved into Sioux because we want to have some greenery. We want to have, you guys are buying land to try to preserve the land for future. So I think it would be a fair compromise to want to ask them a commitment for the ones that they own, that they won't become a blight. Number two, give them everything they want, but keep that space green without any future development of what you call it, potential.
Okay, thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
There are no additional comments.
So Doug, just to make sure that we're getting the motion correct, we would delete from it the words rezoning and?
Yeah, it just has to be preliminary PUD. There's no rezoning part to this.
Okay, so, so the motion would read that the township board of trustees approve OA number two-one-zero-zero-six slash PSP number two-one-zero-one-three, suburban Lithia, preliminary PUD, multiple parcels from R2, single-family residential, and I-1, limited industrial, to PUD based on the planning commission's findings that the requirements of sections thirty-six dash two-five-four dot C and thirty-six-three dash two-four-nine dot D of the Sioux Township zoning ordinance have been met. Is someone ready to make that motion?
I have a question first. I've got to cross out the wording. What about the number of the ordinance amendment, OA?
Is that correct?
Run the line to that because of what we're doing?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not necessary at this point.
Okay, so we'd cross, we also cross out OA number two-one-zero-zero-six?
Thank you, Donna.
Good catch. Okay, as amended, the motion, is someone ready to make that motion? Moved by Palmer, second by?
Fourth.
Well, I don't...
Either way, go ahead.
Vogel, Vogel's hand was up, trustee Vogel's hand was up first. So motion has been made. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Pardon? Oh. There are no nays. Therefore, motion passes.
Thank you very much. We look forward to being back with you in a few months.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, yep, see ya.
So that brings us to the last item, I believe, which is H1. This is the payment of bills.
There were two avid today to the claims as presented from the Wasna County Road Commission. One for twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars ninety-seven cents for dust control, Enterprise Drive and April Drive work from Fund 400, our roads fund. Also, a second one from the roads commission for one thousand, excuse me, one hundred thousand four hundred and forty-seven and twenty-six cents from the general fund four-four-five for the Parkland Plaza and Little Lake Drive culvert repair. So I would, with those two additions, would recommend approval of the payment of these claims and acceptance of the previous check run.
Are there any other comments or questions from members of the board? Since this is now an action item, are there comments from members of the public?
There are no comments.
In that case, someone, so moved by Jerome, second by, wait, did you already move it? You moved it?
No, I didn't. I'm supporting Jerome.
Oh, you, okay, sorry. So we have moved by Jerome, support by Flintoff. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, they may, motion passes. That brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees with the same understanding. Trustee Jerome will be keeping time. We have someone who's ready to speak. Abby?
I'd better be quick. First, I want to thank all the members of the board for allowing me to express what happened to me and my wife. Although she wasn't there directly, but she heard everything because she was at the door. Quickly, what I want to say is the following, going back until the end tail of how this ended, going back, I was very impressed with what Mr. Jerome's knowledge tonight, but he's one of the people that they want to recall also. And when I asked them why, they couldn't give me a reason. So in essence, they want to recall forty-three percent of the public officials. We have seven public officials. If that's a hundred percent, they want to recall three people. And the reason is because, and Mr. Rick brought this up. I was on the board for many, many years, but I didn't get elected last time. I did not know why, how that was Jerome's name, but it's obviously a sore issue with him. So I finally said, we thank you for your service, but these positions are not guaranteed for life. The citizens decide to keep in office for a length of time, and then they decide to change. You know, that's how the nature is. Otherwise, we'll have president for life like China, President Xi. But our presidents change every four to eight years as an analogy. So he's the third person that they wanted to recall, and I never got any answer from them why, what's the beef with them? They only beef us that, oh, they vote in block. So, but you know, votes always end up in a block, but if they vote your way, that's also a block, but you won't complain about that vote. When you get your vote, that's a block also. So that was the issue. The number two issue is that one of the people made the comment that it is proper to ask somebody to vet them. I totally agree. But what they should have done to ask me that upfront, we wanted to sign a petition. Are you a citizen that you can sign the petition? Then I would have all respect for them. They handed me the petition, thinking I'm going to be a yes vote, never vetted me when I became a no. No, you don't need to vet somebody who says I'm not going to vote. I wasn't going to sign their petition. So why try to identify me at that point, and then why bring in where you're from into it? No, the idea is that they're very Trumpian people. We got our own locally, Mr. and Ms. Trump Jr. We don't like what the people elected last time. Our judgment is going to be substituted for them, and we're going to create in nineteen-sixties political bosses to where the elected officials are afraid to vote their conscience. Everything has to be pretty clear with us. I don't think that's what we want to live here. I think we have come a long way. We have come a long ways from living like that. So my hope is that all the citizens of Sioux Township realize the saving that we need is from the two architects of the recall actually, which is Mr. David Reed and Ms. Pat Stone. For their personal motives, and then I came down to that, we repeat again, they engaged in ethnically trying to intimidate me. It's not my first rodeo. I've run into this before. They never asked me if I could vote. If I would have voted, signed their petition, there wouldn't be a single question asked. When I say I'm not going to vote, then there is not a need for them to ask me why and how and where. But that's exactly when they did it, and the end result was, they wanted to make sure that I would be intimidated and not to get involved in the... to get involved in the process.
So Abby, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Are there other members of the public who would like to comment?
There are. Harvey Summers is up next, followed by Pat Stein.
Harvey Summers, still on 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. I want to take a moment and do something I've never done before, which is to thank trustee Vogel. I appreciate her following up on the issue that I raised a few minutes ago about the $36,000 level for the supervisor's salary before April 1st. I just want to say thank you. I'm disappointed in the supervisors' need to hold on to what I see as that extra $16,000, the extra $4,000 per month for four months before April 1st, when the $40,000 salary has actually been authorized. In my view, taking that extra $16,000 of residents' tax dollars before April 1st is illegitimate. So I am sad about tonight's board vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Next up is Pat Stein. Pat Stein, followed by Paula G. Pat? Pat, we're not able to hear you.
I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted.
You just need to speak closer to the mic, probably. We can hear you, but it's very faint.
Are you able to hear me now?
That's much better. Yes.
Okay, well, I'm Pat Stein, and I'm, I would like to withdraw my earlier comment asking for a correction to tonight's approved minutes. The minute stated that I referred to Jane as a miserable B. Well, I watched the video from the last meeting and I sincerely apologize. The video did show that, that is, those were my comments. My choice of words were very inappropriate, unprofessional, and I regret not considering using less offensive words to describe Jane's behavior, ongoing behavior toward other board members. My apologies. I also would like to apologize to the board and to the public for taking the bait on Mr. Abby's accusations of mine and David's. Thank your pardon?
Keep going.
On the accusations Mr. Abby made regarding mine and David Reed's behavior, there's no one in attendance tonight that knows me well enough to believe or disbelieve these accusations. However, you do know David Reed well enough to know that David would never behave in the behavior described by Mr. Abby. And on that same subject, Mr. Hathaway, I was hoping I heard you wrong, but I was getting the clear impression that you were encouraging Mr. Abby to continue with his tirade during this last period of public comments.
I'm sorry, I'm not his puppet. He doesn't encourage.
Abby, Abby, please.
Well, I mean, this is really offensive.
It's not, it's not a fact. So it's her time to speak.
Yeah.
So in that regard, so in that, on that regard, I understand that I am not to address Mr. Abby on his accusations, but he apparently was able to continue his tirade. I don't understand the fairness in that, but I don't want to encourage him to go on any longer, but please know, none of it is true, not a bit. So on that note, good night.
It's all true.
Good night, Abby. Thank you, Pat. Next up is Paula G., followed by Steve King.
Yeah, I want to talk about, I think it was four days ago that the road, whatever, we have so many road commissions, it's the RAC met, and then they were giving an example of the Park Road SAD, which I've discussed before, and went quite lengthy into a SAD that has not been initiated by the township nor by the people. And that a preliminary meeting, that hearing, was not really a hearing, was a discussion. There were very, many very upset people from Arbor Point and Country French. And just because, I feel this is a huge issue in the township because developers come in, and when I watch the Planning Commission too, they offer money up for the pathway, which is a legal bribe in my opinion. And if this developer and one of the, you know, I couldn't identify all who, I know Rory Townsend and Kathy Noel, but he had a British type accent and another gentleman that brought up to the point that we have access to Zeb Road. It's a sleepy country thing, and that will just become a very high-speed cut through to 94 and around Menards, down Stabler. And it's kind of the cart before the horse, like the Huron Farms. That area that they've been demolishing the fields, trail woods, that's not going to even be built on. So why would you put a, try to force a township SAD, which we don't even know what those stipulations are, to pay for a sidewalk, a light, and other things when they're going to be bringing trucks over? We are, and our own roads that we should be thinking about, we're going to have to do our own individual SADS because these are private subdivisions. And the quotes wasn't clear in that meeting, but in that other discussion were 12,000 to 15,000 per household. And Michigan law supersedes any kind of vote for homeowners association. And I just, all right, thank you. I'll be talking about it again.
Thank you, Paula. Paula, and then Steve King. Steve King?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. I don't know if it's me or not. One thing I want to bring out is the, a couple of the comments made about the roads and the Zeb Road access and all is, you know, the rails to trails and whatever they're going to call it is, where do people come to access all of these trails? Because when you look at the Dexter Huron Park, there's six to eight spots for people to park and come into that. When you're looking at the preponderance of number of residents that could access these areas, it's a very minimal number of people. Again, I'm going to go back to the tens of thousands of dollars per resident per access. Because when you think about this, if somebody, if we're going to build this, and there's two or three or four different projects to make this happen, several of which, we've already said, the river, the roadways, the rails are going to be very difficult lifts to make happen. Where do these people park? Because I've accessed these type of things up north in Michigan, and there are parking places. Along Zeb Road, there is no public access parking. Dexter Huron's the only place to park. You have six to eight different places to park. That's it. If we're going to build all these trails and all these roadways and all these pathways, where do these people come in to use them? If it's the initial residents that live in these places, it's a very minimal number of access. It's very expensive, and you're charging it to all the residents. Makes no sense. So if you don't have it figured out of where these people are going to be coming from and how they're going to use it, and then what it's going to cost, again, you're doing the wrong things for the residents. It's all an ego show. I'm totally against it. I will be against it for a very long time. I'm a cyclist around this area. There's no place to park. I don't have danger in my body doing the cycling where I'm at. The pathways are unnecessary. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Steve. There are no more comments. Just got somebody who popped in. Kathleen Brandt? Kathleen?
I want to address some disparaging comments made by Mr. Hathaway. When a citizen recognizes that their governing body takes incorrect action in contravention of Michigan statute, it is that person's civic duty to try to address that wrong. That does not make that action political in any fashion. So the description of an action to correct that should never be deemed as political. That's a biased view which tries to frame the public perception of that action. And I would like to personally ask for that to be corrected. Thank you. Of course, this is in relation to the lawsuit.
Any other comments?
There are no more comments.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved by Jerome.
Second.
Second by Noel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. We are adjourned. At 11:24?
Sure.